Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is 7:00 PM on Thursday, December 8th. We do have a quorum present. We have a lot of items on the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna get right into it. We're taking them right in order that they were posted on our agenda. The first item, before I do that, is anybody filming or recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? That said, the first item on our agenda is a preliminary plan for 43 Main Street, I believe represented by Mr. Mather.
Jim and board members, for your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the applicant Rhino Development LLC. A Form B preliminary subdivision plan prepared by VHB Engineering was filed on November 10th. The plan shows six lots with a roadway extending from Main Street to Rhode Island Road. All of the lots meet the minimum area and frontage requirements of the zoning bylaw. It's no secret that the major, a major purpose of the submission of the plan was to freeze the zoning on the property for eight years. It's intended, of course, that a Form C-
That's for the mixed-use development zone? Or any zone that currently exists?
Anything. Yeah, and any future changes, which is also-
Right, you'll-
-a major reason.
You're getting prior to any change.
Yes. It's intended, of course, that a Form C definitive subdivision plan will be filed. It has to be filed within seven months of the submission of the Form B in order to preserve the zoning freeze. That will put us back before you, sometime before June 10th, 2023. The eventual subdivision plan will likely differ from the preliminary plan and possibly even substantially. No use for the property is proposed at this time. We will see you again sometime before June 10th. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I took a look at the plan myself. It does, to me, it's a great concept plan for the use of the property. Do any other planning board members have any comments on the preliminary plan?
Mark, my only question is, until development begins, is there gonna be any cleanup started of this property?
I'm not prepared to address that tonight.
Are they going to at least maintain? Because that's not being done right now.
I'm not prepared to answer any questions regarding the potential use of the property.
Well, that's not potential use. That's the responsibility of the ownership is to maintain.
I believe you are correct. It is.
Well, it's not being done.
Well, I will pass that on to them.
Any other PD, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything at this time, no.
Michelle?
I mean, I guess my question is, you know, but he probably can't answer it. If they're subdividing, then who's responsibility of the cleanup?
Not prepared to answer that question.
Jack, do you have anything? So at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to any public comment regarding 43 Main Street, the preliminary plan that's been provided. Just please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Noel Rulo-Rosegora. I just, I don't understand if your ultimate plan is gonna differ from the preliminary plan, why are you even submitting a preliminary plan?
It's really, it's a timing thing to freeze the zoning. He's come right out and said that. It's to start the process, and they would have to come back within seven months and provide us with a definitive plan in order to close this loop. It's a standard practice with the procedure of subdividing.
Thank you.
Dave Scott, Rush Pond Road. A great deal was said about the condition of the property and the potential hazards with regard to airborne asbestos, and I would submit that based on what I've heard said in public forums repeatedly over the last two years is that it is a potential human hazard as it sits today. Therefore, I feel that it's incumbent on somebody in town, and I presume that would start with the Board of Health, and then move to the Board of Selectmen, and then move to the Department of Environmental Protection. Is it my correct understanding that the Planning Board has no enforcement authority with regard to the human health hazards that are currently represented and stated repeatedly by the owner?
I would say, to my knowledge, that is accurate. We do not have any enforcement power.
And would I have to start with the code enforcement officer, or would I have to start with the Board of Health first?
I don't know. I can't answer that there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
These are the preliminary plans, right?
Yep.
So I noticed that the, for the zoning summary chart, it still mentions Development Opportunities District. I mean, well, that shouldn't be allowed. Shouldn't that be taken off of there?
I'm sure until that appeal is exhausted, it will stay there.
Well, I mean, the judge has already ruled that there's no authority to use the DOD. So the law as of today is you can't use the DOD. So you can't, if these ever overturned-
You know as well as I do, Jim, it's still under appeal. I'm not an attorney, but I'm sure that's the process and the mindset behind leaving it on there is just in case. And that's all I can-
Have you read the affidavit from the former chairman of the Planning Board? I hope, hopefully you guys have, I mean, it's pretty clear, regardless of the case-
Yeah, we're done with this conversation, Jim. We're not talking about that tonight. We're talking about a subdivision of the land.
I get that, but when you've got preliminary plans that are still mentioned in the DOD, at a minimum, you should be going on the record saying, taking it off. I mean, it's-
All we're gonna do is say that this makes no zoning determination. That's all we're gonna do.
Okay, well, as long as the DOD's not being used for any of-
When they filed the plan, town meeting hadn't occurred yet. So the DOD, whether regardless of whether you could apply it or not, the bylaw itself was on the books.
Yeah, but you're wrong. You've heard town, we brought this up at the town meeting. We brought it up at the town meeting, and Town Council answered. If they don't have a permit yet issued by the Planning Board, they haven't frozen the DOD law. They haven't frozen it. The zoning, it's not allowed. So they shouldn't just be putting DOD on any plans. I mean, that is the law right now. The judge has ruled, that's the law. It hasn't been overturned. So the law is, any plans that are coming forward, it shouldn't be on the plans.
I don't wanna argue with you, but the DOD bylaw was not invalidated. It just was, in his opinion, unable to be applied because there wasn't an overlay district map approved. That's different. That was, the bylaw was removed at town meeting, but this was filed prior to that.
With all due respect, there was a permitting bylaw that was passed that could not be used until you, you can't apply for a permit to use the DOD unless you get DOD-designated area. That's clear. So-
This is it, this is it, Jim. This is it. I'm not going all, we got a lot on each end tonight. And I know you wanna have your gotcha moment, or whatever you're trying to do-
No, I don't wanna gotcha moment.
But it's over. We get it, we get it.
I think it's unfortunate that you still see them on plans.
Done.
I don't know why they're on plans.
So, to be clear, we went through this with, like, for Country Club property with the preliminary plan. Our action tonight should be to-
You can continue it, or you can approve it based on the fact it kinda meets the standard of-
Right, it meets all the zoning requirements.
Right.
The approval is only gonna trigger that it needs the, to be followed by a definitive plan.
That's correct.
I move that the Planning Board approves the preliminary plan for 43 Main Street. I have a motion and a second.
Can we add to that motion, just with no determination of zoning?
Sure. So moved.
A second again.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. So we'll see you by June 10th of 2023. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for 44 Clear Pond Road. I'm gonna read the public notice. The Lakeville Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 41, Section 81T on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library for Preising Street to consider the application of Derek A. and Madeline J. Maxey and Webster Realty Trust for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled "Definitive Subdivision Plan, Country Club Way, a Subdivision in Lakeville, Mass., submitted by Hancock Associates for a two-lot subdivision located at 44 Clear Pond Road. Assessors map 59 block 001 lot 050. The land is owned by Derek A. and Madeline J. Maxey, trustees, Webster Realty Trust. Plans are available viewed electronically in the town's website, on the Planning Department page, or maybe viewed in person by appointment." So at this time, I make a motion to open the public hearing for Country Club Way.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open, so at this time, representative, we'd like to speak to the plan.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Fred Keeler from Hancock Associates. Mr. Maxey is here as well, owner of the property, owner and applicant for the subdivision. You're all familiar with the Lakeville Country Club. A preliminary subdivision was filed back in April of 2022. This definitive plan was filed November, within the seven-month prescribed timeframe to get the definitive plan filed. The preliminary plan is, I think, don't recall any significant comments by the Planning Board regarding the preliminary plan. The definitive plan essentially is the same plan with a few minor changes to the roadway The heavy shaded line is the outline of the Country Club property, and the proposed subdivision runs off of Clear Pond Road and Falls, the existing access drive to the clubhouse as it exists today. The proposed road would terminate at Cul-de-sac about 450 feet from Clear Pond Road. We're proposing two lots. Lot one would be the large lot, which would contain the golf course itself. Lot two would encompass the solar panel field that's on the left as you come in the roadway. Regarding the roadway design itself, it's 50-foot-wide layout as required by the town. Cul-de-sac satisfies the town standards, it's 140-foot diameter for the property line, 120-foot diameter for the pavement. We are proposing curving and sidewalk on the left side of the road as you enter in from Clear Pond Road. It was just a sidewalk and curve on one side. We're also proposing country drainage, if you will. We're proposing to pitch the road up from, super-elevate the road from the left side to the right side, so all the drainage would flow into a water-quality swell on this side of the roadway and enter into an infiltration basin located with an easement in that location there. So that's the deviation from the preliminary plan. The preliminary plan has a traditional drainage system with the catch basins and manholes and a pipe system. This is more what we feel is environmentally friendly, water-quality swell of the infiltration basin. And the roadway, as I mentioned, complies with the design with a few exceptions. We are asking for a couple of waivers on the existing conditions plan. This is a full 16 subdivisions, full existing conditions. It shows the whole property, I'm just showing you the road and a couple of the roadway lotting plans. The septic systems and wells and all the budding properties, we've clotted those from the record drawings that we were able to obtain from the town. We didn't have records for every property, so we're asking for a waiver on that. We can certainly update the plan, there's more information forthcoming from the Board of Health. Property lines for curb radius, we've got the 30-foot curb radius at the intersection, but as you can see, the property line does not have your typical property radius roundings at the intersection, so in that respect, it doesn't comply. I just talked about the country drainage, super-elevating from one side to the other to an infiltration basin. Curves and burns, we're proposing the curb on the one side of the road, so that would be an additional waiver we're requesting. And we're also not proposing any streetlights on this road, it's a very short road. We'll get your opinion on that. And also, we're not proposing any trees being planted along the roadway, because obviously it's a well landscaped property, and many of the trees are being preserved along the edges of the roadway as is. That sort of sums up our proposal. There's no proposed development for either lots, it's similar to the last proposal, intended to protect the zoning for the property as it exists today.
Well, I'm opposed to giving all the waivers that you're requesting, just because after some thought, this subdivision is access to the largest undeveloped business-owned piece of property in town. So I think that the road should have the highest standards of width access drainage, because if it ever did get developed that way, and the road itself was underbuilt for any reason, it, I'm sure it wouldn't be replaced to extend it further into that property for whatever future development could happen. I would lean on the Planning Board, other members, for a comment regarding streetlights and sidewalks, kind of on the fence on those, just because of the neighborhood it's in, however, as I just said, concerned about if this ever did get developed. I think lighting would be important if there was any pedestrian access to that.
I agree with you on that. I would like to see lighting.
And sidewalks as well for pedestrian traffic, you know, if it is developed farther.
Again, they give you a rejected area, we could definitely need lighting.
Yeah, I agree. So I think we'd like to see the lighting, the traditional drainage that you had before, sidewalks.
Oh, and Mr. Chair, I mean, it is a natural heritage site, so I do believe you would have to file with them as well.
Would, and I'm gonna defer to you as the engineer on that one, because I think that most of that is already paved.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was writing, could you repeat the question?
So it shows on the natural heritage maps that there is a protected species on this property, so we do have to file if there's any sort of construction in this area.
Well, we'll certainly look into that. The project, we'll have to go to Conservation Commission, because we are within a buffer zone to a wetland, so that'll be a permit that we'll have to obtain, and we'll certainly go through the endangered species review at that point in time.
Anything else, any of the planning board members?
I don't have anything else.
I do believe, you know, we're gonna open the floor to public comment, but I have to assume that the Planning Board's action tonight would be to continue this and allow you to go through conservation, just to make sure there wouldn't be any change to the plan prior to that coming back to the Planning Board. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any public comment.
May I address the board? Bay Duarte, 121 Main Street. I'm here as Anna Butter, and I have a couple of questions about Lot 2, which comes off right out from this cul-de-sac area or this road. This property, Lot 2, has two entrances, access to roadway. One would be the Clear Pond Road, the other one would be Hartford Street. I'm wondering if it meets the, all of the frontage. As per the plan, it does not meet the frontage in one of the, to Hartford Street, and it's only a 40-feet, and they require it is 175.
The frontage is being created on the actual cul-de-sac of the subdivision? So they do have 175 feet of frontage, it's like 179 point, something I think I added? So there is sufficient frontage on this new subdivision?
Does it need to have access to both roads with the appropriate frontage as listed on the plans?
He does, he only needs frontage on one road.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
And at this time, they're not proposing to put a roadway through to Harcourt or any of the other roads.
There is, on the plan, there is two exits though.
Yes, they do have frontage. I have, I do, I'm aware of that, but they're not proposing a road to go there.
Okay. And they won't have any exits or any-
Somebody certainly could walk on their own property to that road, but again, they're not proposing to put a road or driveway or emergency exit or anything out there.
Okay.
It's only the road that you see on that plan is the only thing that's in front of the Planning Board.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Edith, 57 Harcourt Ave. Can I go back to one page here?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to point out something to the engineer, so it wouldn't be a problem later on.
I suppose it is.
Yeah. So I've lived in this property for 60 years, and there's been other proposals, so when you, at 56 Harcourt Ave, I live at 57, which is-
It's down on the right-hand side.
Oh, that's upside down.
Yeah, we don't live here.
All right. So I lived at 57, and 56 is across the street, and it's a little bit of a downgrade in the road, and there's a drainage there. And that drainage actually goes out into this, I imagine that's where the proposed property to develop is, somewhere over here, that's the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
And this is the property that you're gonna put the houses in?
Well, they're really not proposing to develop anything with this.
Which is, which is fine, but I'm just saying, you know, you have to keep that in mind.
Yes, thank you.
That drainage actually comes out here, it's a culvert that goes underground and comes out here. If that was blocked, then you'd have a problem on that lower part of Harcourt Ave.
Perfect, thank you.
Dave Scott, Rush Pond Road. At this point, we're only talking about the subdivision. We're not talking about any of the details of how it's gonna be developed.
We're not even, yeah, there's not even a proposal for development.
Okay.
Okay, it's sort of been said all along, this, like the preliminary plan for Main Street, is to freeze zone. However, obviously, we're talking about the roadway because the Planning Board, I don't think, would be doing a job if we just said, oh, it's a zoning freeze, and we didn't look at the facts, because this could happen.
Right.
This roadway could be actually built to whatever standard, as I said when we started this, to access the largest undeveloped business-owned piece of property in town.
So it would be at-
So we're just really looking-
Site plan review, it would be at site plan review, where we were talking about the architectural standards and all the detailed design of how it would be actually built out.
Yeah, once there was a proposal.
Okay.
Yes.
And that would happen in site plan review? In other words, they would submit, the next step would be to submit a development, a detailed development plan, and that would go through all the Planning Board reviews that are appropriate?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the name of this street is very close to another street in town. Has, is, has that been considered?
It's just a proposal that needs to be considered.
Are you concerned about Google Maps confusion?
Well, yeah, and if, if something does go in there, you know our package is gonna be delivered incorrectly to the wrong address.
Confused.
That too, yeah.
Three streets.
So if that's a consideration, to make a simple change to the name of the road, it might be good if there would be confusion with another road in town. Would anybody else like to make any comments?
Yeah, I got a question.
Could I bring it up to the microphone, please?
I'm a little confused. That's easy to do. Most of the talk tonight has been about this road.
Okay, could you state your name in the microphone there, please, before you-
I'm John Lewis, and I live at 25 Reservoir.
Thank you.
Most of the talk tonight has been about the road, and I agree, the road's a little rough, you ought to pay that over. But I thought this was a subdivision thing, and that means it's breaking off a lot. What's this about? Are we, we're looking at a road, or are we looking at a, you know, a subdivision? I don't get the, what's happening.
We're looking at both. They've divided the entire parcel now into two parcels, the small one that they-
Well, that makes three. You got the lot, you got the road, and then you have the other parcel, isn't it?
You're allowed to do that.
What am I missing? What am I missing here? I don't understand. I understand him wanting to break out a lot to cover the solar, that makes sense. No, they don't understand where the road comes in.
It's part of the subdivision control laws, and so by putting a road in, you create frontage for those two lots. The roadway becomes a parcel, not a lot. And then you have two lots that each have over 175 feet of frontage on that roadway, then creating a subdivision. You need two lots to create a subdivision.
So this is about creating the subdivision, and if you do so, in this instance, you need a road to do it.
In this instance, yes, yeah.
Is that the gist of what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
And so then, and again, like the first one, this is part of freezing the zoning on that property.
Maybe I have one other question, and that's, maybe you have one other question. This lot seems to me, as for you, a little bit too small. Why don't you include the other lot as well?
When you ask questions-
That's a question, I guess.
Direct them through me, please.
The lots are just designed to comply with the zoning requirements, if there's no-
Right, they mean the frontage and the requirements.
And the capture of the solar panels, so that they're on their own lot, but it meets the frontage area and so forth, so.
Yep. Would anybody else like to make any comments, or?
My name is Sheila Cassatt. I live at 46 Clear Pond Road. Is it my understanding that the entrance to the subdivision is, the entrance will be the same entrance as it is now?
I believe that's accurate, right? It's, you're overlaid exactly over the entrance to the Country Club that exists now.
Will the road be repaved and the speed bumps removed?
This may never be done, but if it's done, then yes.
Well, when I moved into my home there 28 years ago, it was a golf course, not owned by the owner now. It was seasonal, and it was closed at dusk. We have constant traffic, but I would say 90% of the people who come out of there do not pay attention to the speed bumps. We have motorcycle traffic, and it's like, who can make the loudest noise leaving there? We cannot open our windows on that side of the house during the spring, summer, or fall. And when the heavy pickup trucks come over, it bounces the bulkhead. And as far as talking about lights, when Derek, you took it over in the beginning, you put up strobe lights, like airport lights. Even all the town officials told me, those are the new streetlights, Middle Bar Gas and Electric approved. Nowhere in town were those lights. Finally- Finally, it was removed. It took almost three years. When they plow the snow, when we get heavy snow, it doesn't get plowed into your little rotary. It gets plowed out to the street. They've used backhoes to throw it onto my property line. I don't need mountains of snow all winter. And they don't come to clean up the debris in the spring. I get all their twigs, their branches, their sand, their leaves. And you're talking about making the left side a sidewalk and not removing any of the trees on the right-hand side. There's enough broken down, fallen down trees that the rubbish needs to be removed.
I don't think we actually specified one side or the other for a sidewalk, but...
They said left.
I did.
Well, somebody did when they were talking about the proposal.
I'm a fan of the way you, of the left.
So...
But the road really needs repair. And as far as lights, they, they come right into the homes, so they have to be low lights. They have...
Well, they would have to comply with the town's lighting bylaw, which means it shoots toward the ground, not outward.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Tim Larkin, ninety-seven Crooked Lane. It was my understanding, when, when did we, I thought it was like a, what is it, twenty-one A, whatever, agricultural purposes? When did it become business? I mean, when, when did we change that?
I was gonna say around two thousand twelve or something.
Two thousand twelve, it goes back that far?
And we, it's sixty-one A.
Sixty-one A?
That's, it's twenty-one E, or the twenty-one is an environmental thing. Sixty-one is chapter land that's, uh, that's a protection, the property for, open space for tax.
Right.
So it's, it's an entirely different.
Saying everything, I mean, all of a sudden labeled business.
It's not all of a sudden labeled business, it's been that for a long time.
So now what is that, uh, pretend, I mean, is it, what are we looking at, business like, uh, I know, it's, it's not an industrial park, but I mean, what is, what is business?
Uh, anything from retail to office to...
I mean, you done warehouses or, no? Uh, so, so there's...
I, I don't have the zoning bylaw in front of me to go down the list of everything that's allowed in this space. But you, we could look that up or I could...
Are we looking at forty Bs, or, I mean, that's not business, that's residential, is it?
Those are allowed anywhere. Those are allowed in industrial, business, or residential.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they circumvent all the laws.
Yep, yep. That, we have no power over that. That's a state mandate.
Uh, China technical.
No, no, forty B can, or anything business can, or it could remain a golf course, or it, it can't be industrial. And it's tech- technically not zoned industrial, I'm sorry, it's not zoned residential. So the only way that houses would go in there is through forty Bs. It, it wouldn't be, a- as it's currently zoned, it wouldn't be high-end homes.
Now, as far as, because I am right here on the seasonment, this isn't gonna be used?
It's, as far as this plan goes, no. But it, it's hard to say if this got purchased and another owner applied to, to use that access, that, that could happen. But it's not currently proposed for that with this plan. We're just looking at the, the lot line that creates the separation for the solar panels and the road, making two lots and the road. And I'm just, I, I referenced the zoning for my concerns for traffic, because that's what we need to look at as a planning board.
And you're gonna have everybody coming out on, on Clear Pond Road, which isn't the ideal road either.
No, it's not.
You really don't have an ideal road. You got Crooked Lane, which comes up by Stephanie's.
None of it's ideal, none, none of it's ideal, but it's, it's by right with the current zoning that sits, so we have to just deal with that.
So if, if there's a change in use, um, that affects a- any of that, that we, they would come back for a site plan review. So they would have to go through another step. And that, we, we would look at the traffic flow and, and all of that. So this is just, like you said, it's just the division of the, the land right now. And right now, it's still showing a, a golf course on one portion, and then the solar field on the other. That's all it is.
So there's, there's, this is it, this is all the plans that you guys have?
Yep.
As far, I mean, there's no, obviously no structures or anything on that.
No, no, we're, we're not approving anything like that. All we're approving is the construction of the roadway and that they're creating a lot line to divide the golf course into two pieces, solar panels and golf course.
The existing solar panels, you're not gonna, it's done with solar panels, eh, because?
Nope, that's, and that's not on the plan. If that was done, that's permitted separately from this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Being that I see no other comments, uh... I guess I'm gonna make a motion to continue, uh, and I'll let you, uh, decide when you want to return with amended plan to show the changes to the roadway.
Is there gonna be anybody, uh, reviewing the plans on behalf of the town, or are we just addressing the comments we heard tonight?
Yes. Uh, we have a peer review proposal from Environmental Partners. I believe I gave Derek a copy when it came in a few weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago. So, um, the board just should approve, sending it out to Environmental Partners to review the plan and...
And I, just, so before we make that approval?
Yep.
Are we confident that with the waivers we didn't approve or are asking them not give? Will this change, will this review change from what we have in our hands to, to these changes?
Well, they would, yes, they would have to make some additional changes to the plan, if, particularly if you wanted sidewalk or curbing on both sides and didn't want to approve that waiver. Um, that might affect, uh, the amount of drainage going to the drainage basin, because the swells usually accommodate and handle some, some of the flow. I mean, the, the other thing is, is as far as water quality goes, having the drainage swells is, um, helps for treatment purposes. It's not essential, but it's, it's considered best practice.
I could just, I could comment.
Go ahead.
If we could at least get, uh, the initial comments from the peer review consultant? And make, make plan changes sort of at, at one time rather than piecemeal it, so, uh...
Yeah, so, we're gonna...
That's fine.
You can take these.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I can, I guess, uh, what we'll do is, we'll, we need to continue to a specific date, even if you can't make it and you just let us know that we need to add the applicant's request, continue to another day.
March? Yeah. March meeting be okay?
March?
Yeah. That would give us time to work with the peer review consultant, address the comments from the public, the planning board, and your consultant, and submit one, one revised, uh, set of plans rather than that.
But March nine or March twenty-three?
March ninth is fine with me.
And if you can't make it, just let us know and we'll continue. So, um, I make a motion to...
Excuse me, is it too late to make a comment? Uh, I had, we were speaking about drainage, I had a question.
Lois, I'll let you speak, but we sort of, I thought we exhausted all that, but...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, step, step right up and make your comments.
Thank you.
Uh, Lois Nielsen, fifty-one Harcourt Avenue. The access road, uh, where the solar panels are, are now, it's my understanding from some people, well, the Kirsters used to live on one of those houses. They've since moved. But one of the fellows used to work at the golf course. And it's my understanding that there's, from, from him, that there is a drainage area right on that access road, near where the solar panels are. So I just wanna, is there anywhere, is, is it marked on these plans at all? That, that, that there's a drainage, will that be reviewed at some point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the process that we're doing.
Okay, and, and we'll be aware of that?
All of the grading, if they create a standing water, they'll have to pitch it around, swale it, so that they're not gonna create a flood somewhere.
Okay. And, and you know, uh, Mr. Mazzidis mentioned something about drainage and going across to fifty-six, but it's my understanding that there's the drainage area that came, gets blocked up, and was that one time buried on that access road? It caused a backup, so I really think, I just wanted to make the point that that we looked at as far as drainage, because it'll certainly affect all of us on Harcourt.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I move to continue the, uh, public hearing for forty-four Clear Pond Road until March ninth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM. Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
You're a lot younger than I am.
All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a site plan review for one fifty-six Rhode Island Road.
Mark, we also have a review proposal for Rhode Island Road from Environmental Partners.
Public hearings, I can read the public hearings for Rhode Island Road.
And that's, um, he has that as well.
It's being continued?
They're gonna continue it again?
No, it's a continuance, you don't have to read it.
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, oh.
So Jamie?
Don't recognize you anymore. Where the beard? Is that the new you? Let's see.
Is he getting his engineer or? Pretty well.
Somebody bring their arm.
Plan, make the plan better? We'll have a lot to discuss tonight.
Good thanks.
You see my comments, was it?
Yes, I did.
He replied like a half an hour ago, so probably gonna, so he's gonna wanna review that, but I don't, you know. There's a bunch of debatable items or responses, so, um, I don't know.
Mr. Rego, you have the floor.
Uh, so, my name is Bob Rego, I'm from Riverhawk Environmental. I'm here tonight with the, uh, with the client, the applicant, Tyler Sikorski. Um, so this is the second time we've been in. We were in, um, previously and received, um, a bunch of comments, well, some from the board, a bunch from the butters. Um, so we made some revisions to the site and it's been, uh, kinda quite some time, that was maybe back in April-ish when we first came in. So maybe I'll give a...
Excuse me, gentlemen, could you please suspend your conversation or take it outside? Thank you.
Um, so what I'll do is, I'll kinda give a quick, very, uh, broad overview of the whole site again, just to get everybody up to speed and maybe discuss some of the changes we made and then go from there, I guess.
Go right ahead.
Um, so the existing site, it's, uh, Mr. Sikorski currently owns and operates it. Um, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight square foot site. It's on the corner of, uh, Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane. The, the, uh, currently is existing one building on the site, um, that, um, Mr. Sikorski, uh, leases out to, to how many tenants? To two tenants, um, and then he has his own, um, operation on the site, which is trucking and excavating, trucking and excavating. Um, what, what we're proposing to do is add a, um, a building, a contractor building, keep the existing building, um, and add a contractor building with, uh, ten rental units and one unit for Mr. Sikorski. Um, his is kind of a larger unit on, on the rear of the property. The overall dimensions of the building are two thirty-five by, by eighty. Um, currently, the existing property has, um, two curb cuts off, um, Rhode Island Road and one gravel curb cut off, um, Crooked Lane. We're proposing to, as part of the, once paved, yeah. We're proposing as part of the project to close, um, one of the existing curb cuts that's closest to, um, that's on Rhode Island Road, um, which, yeah, is to keep it same orientation, I apologize. But basically, uh, we're proposing to close this existing gravel curb, paved slash paved curb cut over here on the, um, northerly part of the property. We're proposing to close that as part of the project. And then this, this over here, um, is gravel, it's open gravel to, to Crooked Lane. So we're proposing to close the one on, um, Rhode Island Road and then add this second, um, curb cut over here, and then maintain the existing curb cut on, on Rhode Island Road. Um, we're proposing as part of the project to add a forty, um, line to delineated spaces. Um, in terms of loading areas, each one of these bays would have an overhead door, um, to access the unit, and then a man door to access the unit. We're proposing a loading area, um, along the entrance, which wasn't well delineated on our site plans, but we will add that to them. Um, so any large trucks, eighteen-wheeler type trucks would be unloaded in that area. But typically, um, you know, most box trucks and trucks of similar nature and smaller size would be unloaded right in front of the overhead door associated with the, with the unit themselves. For you, um, for utilities, uh, there's existing water line in Rhode Island Road, so we're proposing to connect to that. Um, for stormwater, we're proposing a series of, um, catch basins, uh, throughout the site that will collect the stormwater and, um, will run it, most of the stormwater from the site will be run through a ward bay, and then there's an infiltration basin on the, on the, um, northeastern portion of property. I guess, is that right? Yeah, on the, maybe the southeastern portion of property. Some of the, some of the existing runoff from Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane currently runs to a catch basin. There's a paved swell that directs the water from portions of Crooked Lane and Rhode Island Road into an existing leach and catch basin. Um, we're proposing to, to replace that... We're proposing to replace that catch basin with another proprietary treatment unit that would collect and treat the stormwater prior to discharge to a, again, a subsurface infiltration and then be overflow from that subsurface infiltration out to the rear infiltration basin. Yeah, and then the septic, other utilities, we're proposing an onsite septic system, that would be Title V compliant. The stormwater system would be fully compliant with all the MasDp stormwater management standards. The site lighting, we're proposing dislimbed wall packs on the building. We haven't submitted anything, we're having a little bit of difficulty getting an architect to sign on for the project. Been trying and will continue, but we'll definitely get one. And so we haven't submitted elevations to the board, and I apologize for that. But it's, everybody's crazy busy and it's just tough to find people, it's crazy. So the lighting will be Doc's Sky compliant and it will comply with the Lakeville Lighting Bylaw, which we will, in turn, when we get the architect on board, submit a photometric plan, which we'll submit and make sure it complies with those standards. Waste management, we're originally proposing a single dumpster. You know, thought about this a little more based on a comment from the planner. So we're going to add some additional dumpsters, originally we're going to make it part of the lease and have that discollected as needed, but thought about it and it was a good comment, we'll probably need some additional dumpsters, so we will add those into the, into the site plan. The coverage of the site, the existing site is at about twenty-five point three percent with the existing conditions as they are today. What we're proposing is fifty-seven point seven percent coverage, which is above the fifty percent that's allowed by right, I guess. So we'd be proposing to look for a density bonus in accordance with section six point, seven point six four of the bylaw, to go from the fifty to the fifty-seven point seven percent. And to do that, we intend to comply with all the building requirements. We believe we can do that without too much problem, we, again, we had the difficulty with the architect, but do intend and plan on meeting all those requirements. There's currently, there's material storage, there's mulch and other materials that's sold on a retail basis by Mr. Sikorski over here. That, that part of the, there's also some processing of some soil, excuse me, soil which exists on the site. Those would be eliminated as part of the future use, those would no longer be uses at the site. We'd get rid of those mulch and stone and whatever else is sold there. And there are, there would be, there's some heavy equipment and trucks currently parked on the site. Those, the heavy equipment would be moved inside the store, it would be in, or to a different site, yeah, to a different site. There would however intend, we do intend, and Mr. Sikorski intends to keep the trucks that are there onsite. So as part of those density bonus requirements, it does require screening, which we're proposing some extensive landscaping along the perimeter of the roadway, which we believe would meet the definition of those, and hopefully the planning board would agree, meet the definition of the, of screening of those parking spaces. And that's really it, so that's kind of the most of it, so if you have questions or.
Peter, you want?
So I know you just said no more storage of material.
No more storage.
Now you're going to a business, a rental pay business essentially, that's, that's all you'll have there. What equipment's going to be there? Can you narrow it down more than just some equipment?
No, just my trucks.
Your trucks, which are like.
Some of my trucks.
On this, on this map, where would they be? Like, I know you talked about, I see the, I see the shrubbery and everything.
Yeah, we'll delineate better spaces and add those to the plan, yes, yep. So we will, as part of future submissions, because we don't, you know, plan to get approval, I don't think, we will specify the location and maybe improve the screening around those areas.
So from the first time we saw this, how much, have you moved the building back?
Yeah, the building, the building moved closer to Rhode Island Road significantly, and we went from a.
But off of Crooked Lane also, or that line is about the same?
It's about the same, it's about the same. We did close a curb cut, moved the building forward towards Rhode Island Road. We went from a system of surface swales for the drainage. We removed those, because you're not allowed to count those in the areas, and we switched to catch basins and piping that leads to the rear infiltration basin. Yeah, oh yeah, and part of the, one of the comments and questions was, we were originally asking for a waiver to allow for reprocessed asphalt in terms of the surface and the parking areas. We will pave those, make those between this concrete and eliminate that.
That's all I got.
I think you explained it pretty well.
Jack, do you have any comments?
If I understand correctly, you're no longer going to be in the landscaping materials supply? And what about the pre-service trucks? Are they suddenly there? Is somebody pre-service?
A tenant, but I have to use that building for myself afterwards, telling my overflow building, so. And I don't intend on having any trucking or trucking companies in any of those lease bays at all, so no, he's, no, they were not being done. The only trucks on the site I want are my own, as far as that goes.
If I could go back again, so I saw where one dumpster is. When you add in one dumpsters, where do you plan to put them? Like, I just have it in your mind, sort of a thought.
They would probably be along, along this area here, there might be, you know, maybe a couple here and a couple there.
Okay.
So add some additional dumpsters.
Are the, if somebody rents one of these units, is it your intention to allow them to park in front of the unit? Like, or would they not be allowed to park there due to access, like, the width of the?
Yeah, no, they would have to park in a lined, you know, designated parking space.
Okay.
Operating hours are.
Other than for temporary loading or unloading.
What are the operating hours? Because I've seen trucks there at night, later at night.
Trucks are always there.
Okay.
Operating, have my trucks work during the day.
Okay.
Good, Jack?
Yes.
No, you have any comments?
Not at this time, I'm good.
So I know, Tyler, you referenced the existing building, you'd use it as an accessory use for yourself. If this was to go through, we do really want to see elevations of something, I know you're working on it, I'm not harping on that. Myself, I look at just the footprint there and I'm just thinking, a nice looking Morton building that looks like a barn, you know, red, red building with white trim or something that, you know, really dress it up with, for what it is.
That's my intention, build like a barn, your name's Tyler, looking building.
Yeah. Bob, you may have referenced it on the Crooked Lane entrance exit. It does look like, and I think Mark had referenced, the water could pitch out into the road from there. Are you going to be able to pick that up with?
You know, it actually does pitch to the road, but we're picking it up and you might not be able to see this far away. But at the, at the, right there at that point is the low point. So water right now, it picks up water from Crooked Lane, off Crooked Lane, goes into a paved swale that goes to a leach and catch basin. So we're going to pick up that water, and we're also going to pick up the water from this section of the entryway. This small, it's a little small orange dot over here, so it's probably really small to use. But that's a catch basin essentially, with a treatment unit beneath it. And then that'll go back onto our site into subsurface infiltration.
So you'll actually pick up some of the road water?
We're actually picking road runner, and so now we're picking up the water, which it does now, but before discharging it to the subsurface, we're treating it.
Okay. So I look forward to seeing what you come back with. I think that's all that I have, but I'm going to open up the floor to any comments.
My comment letter you just emailed about.
I just did, I just finished it, so we.
So whether you want to do it before or after the public comments, but I think we should read through the comment letter and his responses to give him some direction, because something.
Do you have it, Weebuck?
I do, yeah, and I actually, I made copies. So it was fairly extensive, so I don't know. I'd be happy to read each one in a response to it.
Sure.
If that's the best way.
I think so.
Okay, so these were comments from, from the planner, from Mark. We got two days ago, and like everybody else, we're very busy, so I just got an opportunity to respond to them this afternoon. And just right before the meeting, right before I drove over here, sent the letter to Mark's email. So the first comment indicates that if we intend to use this continued use of this building, we have to get a determination from the building inspector that it's basically an accessory use to the thing and it's not multiple structures on a, on a, on a lot, which we have had discussions with Nate Darling, and he seems okay with that. But we will certainly get that letter.
It should be before the board takes action on the site plan.
Action, okay, okay.
Not prior to the.
Okay.
They shouldn't be approving something if it's not.
It's not zoning compliant.
If it's in violation of the zoning, so.
Makes sense, yep, makes sense, so we can do that, that's no problem, and we'll do it before the board takes action. The next thing has to do with easement on the property, it was brought up by an abutment, there's potential easement on the property. And there is, is in fact an easement around this electrical box that's out there. So it's twenty by twenty, and that, that, we did take account for that in the area coverage, you're not allowed to use that. So that was minus out when we did do that along with swales and.
The fifty-seven point seven accounts for that.
That accounts for that, it was not taken out from the frontage, but we have six hundred and seventy-seven point one six feet of frontage, we're required to have one seventy-five, so if you minus out the twenty, it has no effect, it's six fifty-seven. Mark's next comment dealt with the aisle around the the rear driveway, or at least as I see it around the back of the building, is twenty feet wide. The section six point five, point four, point five says that drive aisle shall be twenty-four feet wide if they serve more than two or more parking spaces. So I don't see that as a drive aisle serving parking spaces, and this is just an opinion thing. If the board does, we can certainly increase that to twenty-four, but right now it's twenty feet. I just see it as a driveway around a building, which I've, most, lots of times have driveways that are eighteen foot wide around a building, and most fire departments are okay with that. But again, if the board sees it differently, we'd be happy to make it twenty-four.
I think given the fact that the drive aisle is right up against the building, and it's not a landscape thing, and you are having trucks, and the fire department does need access around there, at the minimum, it needs to be, it needs to be the twenty-four feet for them to make the swing around the buildings or trucks, I mean, you never know.
I know most, I shouldn't say most, some engineers have software that simulates the fire apparatus going around the building. Have you done that?
We have, and it's included in the plan package. It probably wasn't done, it was done for WB fifty-five or something like an eighteen wheeler, which is, has a bigger turning radius than most or all fire apparatus that the town has.
Yep.
So it'll clear that, no problem. But, you know, like I said, if the board wishes, we can certainly make that twenty-four feet wide and, you know.
All right, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Keep going.
Okay. There was a question about the parking calculation, and it was probably the way I presented on the plan, but maybe that we only count one parking space per unit, but we actually counted two parking spaces for each unit, and if you do that, if you, based on units, number of units, we have forty spaces on site, we have three point three spaces on.
Per unit.
Per unit, so to me, that's more than enough for the type of use we're proposing. You know, not many of these units will have onsite employees that are there throughout the day. Some might have cars that, you know, come in and park and then leave, but again, I believe it to be sufficient in accordance with the zoning requirements, but that, again, if the, if the board wishes to see more, we certainly have the space to add them.
I think my comment more had to do with if you're doing two per and you have twenty-four, how many employees does Tyler's business have, so?
Yeah.
Because that's a known, that's a known thing, so I'm assuming it's, you know, you have enough spaces, but it wasn't called out in the parking.
Right, it wasn't called out clearly, right, it wasn't called out clearly, so I apologize for that.
So how many employees do you have? Like, one for each of the trucks that are up front, roughly?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, less, less employees than trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next comment deals with the driveway on Rhode Island Road, which is a rather wide curb cut. It's actually eighty-nine feet, is how we're showing it proposed. That's an existing curb cut, we maintain that. That could be reduced down, it was, based on comments from the abutters in the past hearing, there was a push to make sure all the truck traffic goes out to Rhode Island Road and stays, you know, tends to stay away from Crooked Lane in the corner. So we just maintained it as the existing curb cut. But if the board wishes, we can reduce that curb cut down with that curb cut.
Okay.
The next deals with the paving of the parking area, so we've already conceded to that. We will pave the parking lot with between this concrete and. The next question is the adequate loading area. So what I talked about in my original presentation was, this is forty feet wide between the building and the side area. So this area along here is a six, if you have a twenty foot four wide drive aisle, it's sixteen by sixty-five along here, which we can delineate and stripe out as a loading area. So any large trucks could be unloaded there, eighteen wheeler type trucks. We don't expect a ton of those to be going to the type of businesses we're proposing to go there. And then each of the units will have an overhead door with space in front of them to do temporary loading and unloading, and then cars could pass on the rear of those. So the next comment deals with location of abutting structures within two hundred feet. So on our site plan, which is a five hundred scale plan, one inch equals five hundred feet, we have an aerial photo which has all of the abutting properties with the two hundred feet. I don't know if that's satisfactory to the board, certainly we could have a smaller scale plan that shows the location of those structures more clearly, but that does show, you know, all structures within two hundred feet on that aerial photo. Building elevations need to be provided, so certainly we talked about that, and I know it's important to the board, and we will get those to the board prior to, you know, to appear in front of you again. Lighting plan, similarly, I mean, we will one hundred percent comply with Doc's, be Doc's Sky compliant, comply with Lakeville Outdoors Lighting Bylaw, but again, when we have the architect on board.
A lot of times, sorry to cut you off.
Photometric plan.
Those, if you go to like a Granite City Electric.
Yeah, they'll.
They'll do it for you.
Absolutely.
They want to sell you the lights, so they'll do that sort of a plan for free, I think.
Yes, yes, and we do get that done a lot, it's just more so where we're going to put the wall pack lights and stuff. He doesn't intend to have this like a retail setting or anything where there's nighttime lighting beyond. Intend to have this like a retail setting or anything where there's nighttime lighting beyond, you know, disfor safety and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, locations of dumpsters and mechanical equip, the next comment pertains to the location of dumpsters and mechanical, it's always discussed. Um, took that as a good comment and rethought it, we're gonna increase the number of dumpsters and um. We don't intend to have any, at this point, any mechanical equipment ex on the exterior of the buildings.
If I could ask one about that one, so uh is there natural gas available on either of these, there's natural gas available, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah. Um, s- the next comment pertains to um observation holes beneath the um. Uh, infiltration area, so we did it as part of the septic design, we we excavated for. Um, deep observation holes um in in um. This area of the site underneath the proposed septic and the reserve area for the septic, our proposed infiltration is over here and over here. This entire half of the site. So eh, we we're assuming the soil consistent and the water table will be consistent, um, the USDA Soil Conservation Service. Um, she has that whole half of the site map that is the same type of soil. So we felt it was cons, you know, would be consistent and and I bet a lot if we went out there, it's gonna be consistent, but certainly we could. Um, go out there and pop a few holes in and and confirm that that is truly consistent. And I'm, that probably will be a comment from um the drainage review.
Yeah, well, it's it's in the proposal that I sent you that they observed the.
Then then they will observe them, okay, 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 yep.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So so we could do that, so it's in, it's in the proposal, um.
They wanna come out, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they wanna come out, and that's part of the, part of the proposed cost for the for the drainage drill site. Um, okay. We talked about, the the next comment pertains to the drainage at Crooked Lane, the intersection of the driveway, so so we talked about that, I'll be picking that up. Uh, proposed and existing locations of signs is the next comment, so so we did show, there's an existing sign um on the layout plan. On the site, which we do show, we're not proposing as part of this any other signs, in building or freestanding signs as part of this. Uh, sedimentation erosion control plan, so we submitted a stormwater report, which included a drainage uh sedimentation and erosion control plan. Uh, it's also presented on our um, in our site plan package, uh, we have um these. Yeah, this is upside down, but we have kind of a written um narrative of of the drainage and erosion control plan on the on the left side of the plan. And we're proposing, you know, to basically perimeter, uh erosion controls, any existing catch basins, we'd have um siltation bags in there to make sure there's no. Um, you know, sto- uh, construction related um sedimentation that goes offsite. And uh, and then just finally, I guess, um, we'll be disturbing around um around uh one acre, so we will submit a notice of intent. Took for coverage under the US uh EPA uh NFTs uh to construction general permit, and as part of that, we'll prepare a. A comprehensive um stormwater management plan. Uh, then then the 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 rest of the remaining comments relate to the density bonus. Um, and 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 our uh compliance with that section, I guess. Um, so so some of the things relate to the building and they were tough to comment on because we didn't submit elevations of the building. Um, so that we'll we'll make sure that the building does comply when we when we do get those architectural plans, that it does in fact comply with those. Um, requirements for the density bonus. Um, the next uh comment is a parking lot orientation, it's supposed to have sixty percent of the parking spaces. Um, in in um. So we have sixty seven percent between the building and the roadway, so we'll, we we will, we we will alter that. Um, so we have um. So so we do meet that requirement, so there's, so um. Sixty percent of the less will be between the building and the thing, right now we're at sixty seven percent, so we'll push two back and eliminate two in the front. Add four and and eliminate two in the front, and then we'll be within that sixty percent requirement. Um, the next thing deals with an earthen berm of at least six feet high. Um, in in my reading of this might be a little different than Mark's, but um.
It's not required.
Yeah, I don't believe it's required, it says it has to be adjacent residential use. And I I I don't believe we have any adjacent residential uses, I I treat that as a direct abutter. Uh, I believe interpretation any other way would make every site um somewhere far away. On every site, there's gonna be a residential use if you go far enough away.
Well, it calls out other than along a street.
Yeah, so we have a street, a street, and then we have industrial zone and industrial zone.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, outdoor storage, uh currently large, a a large portion of the site is used for outdoor storage, which is true, we're gonna eliminate the outdoor storage. From from this proposal and and no longer do that. Uh, large number of um commercial vehicles, uh, the the heavy equipment type machinery will be moved offsite. Um, the existing trucks, we do intend to remain on site and we'll do a better job at um delineating where those will be parked and then screening those. Um, and it said too, we are proposing some fairly extensive um. Landscaping along the perimeter of roadways of the site to um to to screen those uh parking spaces. Um, so it's, you know, up here and then back here, um, there's a solar facility over here. But but again, we'll we'll do a better job of delineating those and and screening those.
Okay.
In the future plan. Just said, the next comment that says we basically have to incorporate these things into the architectural plans, the the loading docks, truck parking, outdoor storage, utility, we use H HVAC equipment. Trash dumpsters, trash compacts and other services must be incorporated to overall building design and landscaping, so we will do that. Like I said, I guess, the answer to the previous comment is the answer to that comment. The next section, which is all comments which relate to seven point six point four point five pedestrian flows. Um, so these generally seem to be written to relate to retail establishments, especially with multiple uses. Um, so eh the the first one is pedestrian walkway should be provided on the side of a lot along Crooked Lane. Um, so we do, we are proposing a a one internal um sidewalk, which runs along the front side of the building here. So to get kind of from one side to the other, um, you know, the 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 um, people have to park on one side or the other for for one reason. Um, the continuous internal walkways, I I don't think, based on the the site configuration, um.
Well, the design and use of your building is really. A contractor bay, people are gonna go to the contractor bay.
They're gonna go right there.
From the parking space to the contractor bay across the parking lot.
One parking space, so you're crossing a a driveway or or, so there's really no way to to provide those internal sidewalks or. For internal circulation of the site. Um, we could um, you you know, put a concrete apron around the building, which. Probably it wouldn't have a um reveal on it, but it would be a different surface, so kind of to delineate better the um. You know, the walking areas from from the driving and and surfaces, but I don't think I'd propose any um reveal on any curbs or anything along the building.
At that, I guess, I I'm gonna leave that between you and the building commissioner, because I'm not gonna say yes or no. I really, I think the ADA compliance.
Yeah.
So if you needed, you know, zero clearance to get into one of the man doors into a bay, you know, just say hypothetically, if. Somebody in unit three di- did have uh somebody that. Needed ADA compliance to get in and out of the building, that worked in maybe a little office for him.
Yep.
You know, I I'm not gonna tell you yes or no to a sidewalk as much as, I think you just focus on make sure that everything's ADA compliant.
Yeah, exactly, and that's why I just said no reveal, and that's a perfect comment, because. It's hard to get up and down and go on a garage door and then up to a man door and then down.
Oh, it'd be.
It ramps up and down, and it's just, it just doesn't work well with these types of buildings, yeah. Um, next thing is sidewalk connection to customer entrances, again, there'll be no retail proposed as part of this. Um, y- you know, there is no really sidewalk um connections that would be proposed. Um, and the 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 rest of the comments are all merely about sidewalks and internal um uh pedestrian circulation, which I think are all answered by that.
So if I could, uh, to the planning board members, uh, Mark's comments under item twenty. I I think he thoroughly went through uh seven point six of our bylaws, and it's it's really triggered by. The the lot coverage, it's not by the size of the building, but the lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and and number twenty itself says, basically, these items really are designed for, I don't quote it, but it says it's. Designed for retail establishments, it may be waived by the board.
Right.
But because it's in there and you haven't waived it yet, and we don't have a design yet.
Yeah. Understood.
Which could change, I I felt I should at least point all of these items out.
Yep, and and I'm 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 not disagreeing with any of it, I'm just saying, I just want the board to be comfortable, giving them a little history on where this is coming from, where it's going. Is that the uh big box bylaw. Has two components, it's it's a design for a Home Depot, as well as the lot coverage triggers. The density bonuses for the architectural design. So we're really looking at it from the lot coverage being at fifty seven point seven percent, triggers architectural design. However, these items are still within the big box design standards, so we have to understand that we may wanna waive these because it's not a retail establishment. Where you don't necessarily need a roof over your sidewalk to get people into the store. Uh, because it's contractor based, so I I think it would be reasonable if we did wanna waive those, but again. Bring back a design, great design, and I would say most likely we'll probably waive all that stuff.
Did the plan show a concrete, one concrete sidewalk, is that right? To get from one side to the other?
From one side to the other.
Okay. Funny, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
In case there's no parking spaces on one side, but your lots on the other and vice versa.
Yep.
A- and one quick question, um, should you extend that back drive lane, the four feet that we asked? Could that be done and still keep um to even as high as fifty nine point nine or uh sixty?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know how close you're getting, but.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yes, we we can reconfigure still a little bit like that, yes, yeah, I mean, we can get rid of some of the.
Okay.
We can get rid of the 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 current thing, maybe more behind there, just in building.
I'm, eh, even if you don't change anything and you just go more, um, but it, but you still stay at the um.
Yes, yes.
That's fine by me, so.
What are you talking?
Uh, the the driveline and be that swings behind the building to extend it to the to the full twenty four. But not bust the sixty percent and have to go to the to the higher number, you know, of lot coverage.
I'm just thinking of what I did on, my my building was, put out four feet of like a washed riverbed stone. Really not a landscape bed, but it still looks nice, and it gives you the radius, because it's really the 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 trucks push it towards that thirty foot radius, which I know you. You probably have over a thirty foot radius on that swing of the pavement, but just with the corner of the building being so closing. It probably would be nice to get a little extra on that, so if you just put a stone bed on the back of the building to push the pavement out, so you're not increasing coverage. And just giving you a little bit of length room for the truck.
Yeah, yeah, so would that be acceptable, or if we kept it at twenty foot, but but maybe add that four foot of of. River rock or, you know, in between the building and that, yeah, yeah, and like like you said, Mark, we 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 have the um.
Yeah.
You know, the the truck, we we did the sweat path analysis and we we can make those turns, no problem as is, so that would only help the matter.
I just hate to see him clip the corners, it would be nice.
Yeah, 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 that's.
You know, do that little bit of a bed and put one bollard on the corner and he's flipping a bollard instead of the corner of your building.
Yes, yeah, agreed, much better, yeah.
So, all right, I think you went through that list thoroughly, Bob, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I'm gonna go to comments from the public now, and then uh, we'll 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 convene after that.
I just have one interpretation question.
Go ahead.
Because it has to do with uh number eighteen for the earthen berm and the trees and the planting requirement for. Um, facing residential uses, and so that section says, notwithstanding the provisions of five one, but five one really. Applied to setbacks from um, and and give an exemption, um, not an exemption, but it says. So I think um, that still does apply, is what I'm saying.
Where's the residential use?
Well, residential use across both streets are and to the right are residential uses, on three sides of the building.
It says adjacent, though.
I I don't know if the term adjacent is defined in the zoning by law.
Five, five point two point five states industrial districts adjacent to the boundary. Of a residential district, other than along a street. There shall be provided either a buffer strip or so.
A a buffer strip is a different buffer strip than what's required under this section. So that buffer strip of five point two point five point one wouldn't apply, but the buffer strip, which is. Reduced, but still a buffer strip in six, seven point six point four point three would apply.
But you, so you think an earthen berm is applicable around the street?
That's what it says.
I don't I don't believe it does, cause it says adjacent.
Yeah, well, it's adjacent resi- well, when you send a butter notices, your butter is, the street doesn't matter, they're adjacent, you send me a butter notice.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if the term.
I mean, why, why would, yeah.
I mean, why would you put a berm around the front side of the street?
Because it's an industrial use adjacent to residential, you see, you wanna buffer it from residential use, if it was in an industrial park. You'd be, you know, across the street from other industrial stuff, I think that's why this was written that way, was that.
All right, we'll we'll look into that first.
I mean, there's something for the board to think about.
We gotta get Nolan up here, cause he's been.
No, it's a good discussion, I I I think I would. One no, one twenty Crooked Lane, um, I think the buffer particular in Crooked Lane where it's. The only scenic byway in Towne Lakeville would certainly apply. Um, there, you know, the Rhode Island Road, I can see where you could argue that one, cause you had a major driveway there. But Crooked Lane at minimum, if you're considering a buffer with a a mound, would make sense to me. Cause it is a scenic byway. So that would be my only addition to that. Um, so in general, from the start, my comments have been centered around. Too much for the size lot. And most of the comments that have been made about how many parking spaces, et cetera, really come down to that lot coverage. How much really is appropriate for the lot. Along with, that's one, and the second one really has to do with entrance of trucks from Crooked Lane. So. To start, there were comments presented about existing driveways. Excuse me, existing driveways, so let me orientate myself, there was an existing, today there's an existing driveway here. That's being eliminated in this plan, but that driveway did not exist prior to this occupant. It was created without a permit, so it's not, so we're saying we're eliminating a driveway, it's actually a driveway. that is not permitted. This driveway, yes, that's been there. Uh, under the zoning board, application from previous uh, work, he was required to close a driveway at the intersection, which makes sense, cause it's right at the intersection. It's been referenced about a paved driveway off Crooked Lane. That again is not a driveway, that was an old railroad bed. And at one point, gravel removal permit was issued and as a condition of the gravel removal permit, it was required for temporary access for the gravel trucks. It was paved as an erosion control measure, it's just they never came back to rip it out. But it never went through a process to be approved as a driveway and it was certainly put in, in the time period since we've had the bylaw that requires driveway permits. So with the elimination of the one at the corner, there are multiple gravel entrances on the property as well as that paved entrance, which isn't being used as a driveway now, it just happens to be paved, like I say, based on the history, it's all in records that it was a condition of a gravel removal permit, nothing else. So I just want that to be recognized. So we're not eliminating driveways consolidating them, we're really asking for a new permitted driveway on Crooked Lane. And as I understand it, there would be tractor trailer trucks entering and exiting from that driveway.
I'm sure that's possible.
Yeah.
But I mean, if I was driving a tractor trailer, I'd rather go on the
Right.
sixty-foot wide one than the.
Today, today it happens all the time from Crooked Lane, so I'm assuming it's gonna continue to happen if there is a driveway there. So the issue with that, which I brought up in the last meeting, is that Crooked Lane is maybe eighteen feet wide at this point. So while I did see a plan that was issued that showed tracking of the tractor trailer that was submitted to the planning board at some point in the last couple of months. It showed a left turn in and a left turn out. The two moves from the opposite side of the road. And it showed that those conveniently work. What it did not show is a right turn out. Or I should, yeah, right turn out and a right turn in. In order to do those, very clearly, you have to cross the entire road. So one of my two big issues is that this Crooked Lane does not work for truck access, so can we simply access from Rhode Island Road? That's, it's just as simple as that, because of the safety issues.
Should we close the intersection of Route twenty-eight and one oh five?
Route twenty-eight and one oh five.
Truck can't turn on that turn to coming right off twenty-eight.
Well, that's middle bar, isn't it?
I'm just using the intersection, a huge intersection as an example, truck can't take a right at that without crossing multiple lanes.
Are they in before you as a planning board to approve a driveway? Would you approve a driveway like that? We're not talking about existing things that are from the past.
No, I'm talking about a huge intersection.
A huge intersection.
That a truck still has to cross multiple lanes, I mean, it's.
That's fine, but are you approving that intersection? You're approving this. So you're gonna tell me that because it happens in some other location, you don't need to require it here. That's essentially what I'm saying. You don't need to require a truck to be on one side of the road and not cross the road here because in other parts of, of the world. It, they have to cross the road. We're talking about a site plan that's essential to the site plan. Can trucks enter and exit safely? So we're not talking about, we're not even talking about the intersection of Crooked Lane. When you come around the corner, I asked for a site business. In the last meeting, I've seen nothing on site business, because when you come around Crooked Lane, if a truck is all the way across the road right here, this is a pretty blind corner. Right? There'd be an accident. I'm not making it up, it's just reality. That's all I'm asking is a realistic look at what's being proposed and what can be done to mitigate it. So an easy mitigation is, there's no driveway on Crooked Lane, simple.
Or, Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we could do, if, if he'd be amenable to having it as a one-way traffic, because that way they could pull in and then, uh, exit without having to worry about that turn.
They still can't right turn in without going across.
Well, but so, but.
Are you talking about in, uh, Crooked Lane?
Coming in off of Crooked Lane, so that's a left-hand turn into.
Well, no, but there could be a right, if the truck's coming from the other direction, there could be a right turn, but. They're probably less likely what we saw the plan for.
Increasing the driveway radiate doesn't change the width of the road.
Right.
So it's the width of the road that's causing the issue. And again, why do we need to access from Crooked Lane? Along that note, the building is moved, I believe, closer to Rhode Island Road, maybe closer to Crooked Lane, I'm not sure from the last time. Why? This isn't, uh, this industrial strip here, industrial strip here. You know, why isn't it moving closer to the industrial? You know, does that help solve some problems? But again, it comes back to the lot coverage. And as I believe I've heard tonight, there are still outstanding issues with how many spaces, size of various things, twenty-four foot aisles, et cetera, all which affect the lot coverage. And we're currently at fifty-seven percent with this proposal. And we don't, we don't even know if we can allow that, because we're being asked, apparently, tonight, to waive the, the drawings until we get an approval.
No, we didn't. We're not in the comments?
We have to waive the drawings. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, we're demanding the drawings.
Okay.
For anything.
Excellent.
We require that to be a beautiful building, if we're gonna give them anything over fifty percent lot coverage.
I thought I heard one of the comments was, to that effect, okay. It was mentioned trucks, I think in the comments, and again, it's hard to hear, trucks will be inside now or outside? The building. Last meeting, I think the trucks were gonna be inside the building.
I believe that they're coming back with a plan and the tractor trailers will be outside and we will be shown the location or locations where they will be parked.
Excellent, because the concern, of course, is where and how that affects lot coverage.
And we will find out. We, we still are waiting for a lot of answers that Mr. Regal will come back with to us.
Good. Another, unless it was mentioned up here and I didn't hear it, was hours of operation? We asked that the last time.
Uh, I believe Tyler did mention something, but it's, uh, do you wanna?
I asked, I think the gentleman's.
Right, but what are the hours of operation, right? So night could be nine PM, ten PM.
Well, I, I guess I'm gonna say that he's renting to multiple businesses is the proposal, so I think that those businesses will need to comply with whatever town bylaws there are or apply for extended hours of use individually. So I don't think that that's something that we.
So, so you don't set the hours of operation?
I think there are hours of operation currently set for the town. There are noise restrictions for seven AM and whatever that, I don't, I can't recite them all off the top of my head.
Do you know where they would be? Is it the zoning, is it, I don't call seeing.
Either a general bylaw, I think there's any noise.
I think it's general.
General? And did I hear that we're not, the proposal is not asking for a waiver from recycled asphalt? So it's gonna be paved, okay. Um, a question would be, what is the old building accessory use? What's it gonna be used for?
Storage.
Storage, not repair?
No.
Storage. And is all this, in all these uses, are they put into a document somewhere? That that can be then going forward?
Are you asking me, does that use exist in writing currently somewhere?
No, I'm asking.
Or is that gonna be on the site plan?
From an approval from, for site plan, will there be a list of, this is accepted as an accessory building for use of storage only? Does that get mentioned?
I'm sure that we can do that, but that's a zoning bylaw, that you can't have two buildings, the second building would need to be an accessory use to the main building.
Right.
We would need a, a clarification letter from Nate.
Right.
Before that's an approval.
Whether the building can be there, what would be allowed in there, and then we would fold that into the site plan approval.
Cause an accessory use could be repaired, right? It was used, I mean, that could be considered an accessory use. So I'm just asking.
I, I'm, I'm speaking from experience that I own a property with an accessory use building. My understanding is you can't have plumbing, it can't be a dwelling. You can again, conduct some business out of it that would be related to the main building's use.
That's why I'm just.
There is a guideline to that that exists within the zoning bylaws.
Right, but my question is, as an approval of the entire site, as it then may affect the rest of the site, does this approval specify what the accessory use is?
Well, we haven't written.
No, it's, it's just, it's an accessory use to the main building. So that's the definition of the use of an accessory building. So are you, I, I feel like you're trying to make us say, this is going to be, this one use is going to be the use, but if you change the, if he sells the building and the main occupant wants to use it for a different use, we can't hamstring to that, it's just, it's the use, an accessory use to the main use of the main building.
Right, but the issue always is whether it's changing hands or whatever, if it affects the overall site. So I'm just trying to see what kind of guardrails are gonna be in place moving into the future. That's simply the question.
Bob.
Yes.
I want you to put on the plan on that building that you want us to sign, accessory structure.
Yes.
Accessory use only.
Yes.
Then if, going into the comments and responses, you know, a- again, there are several that deal with, I guess, wait to see what the lot coverage comes out after dealing with several of these. I just wanna know for the record, you know, when it comes to number four, having to do with number of employees and therefore parking spaces, you know, uh, it appears that the current plumber has, I believe, I've seen three trucks there. So each truck has a driver, so certainly those are three employees that leave a car at minimum. I, I think, uh, the Sikorsky business has eight trucks. Yeah, but, so given that, I mean, I know five employees were thrown out, but maybe it's currently with a few shorter drivers, I know there's usually a couple wanted signs out. But I'm just saying as, again, as part of the review, to look at, you know, the reality. And, you know, so I, I believe there's at least eight employees there, just to drive the trucks and leave a vehicle behind.
Well, you said five earlier.
Right, that's today. No, that's today, I'm, I'm talking about eight tractor, between tractor trailer triaxle on the road Sikorsky trucks.
But he said he has more trucks than drivers.
Current.
More trucks than them.
Current, right.
He, he, we asked a question, though, and that was his answer.
So I'm just pointing out that in the future, again, planning board is supposed to review not just the current condition, but what would be happening under the allowed site plan. And under that allowed site plan, clearly it's very quickly could go to eight employees instead of five, things of that nature. Just reinforcing the fact that the parking is very important. To have twelve businesses, twelve separate businesses on a three-acre lot, it's pretty accessible. You know, I don't know how many cases like that are in town. So it's just concern that once it's built, there's gonna be people everywhere, there's gonna be parking everywhere and that spills over in the roads. We certainly see that in other businesses in town where it wasn't accounted for, number of employees weren't accounted for. So I'm just pointing out what reality is and what I believe should be looked at. No waiver to the asphalt. So the response in number seven about the loading area says all tractor trailers will unload this area. Could point to me what the area that they're unloading?
The area, which, which will do a better job of, of showing, but this, this area here, there's a twenty foot, four foot wide and then this sixteen by sixty-five area right here. And then each, each, um, unit has an overhead door, which the typical unloading and loading will occur at. So only when there's a large tractor trailer truck to unload. And if you're getting stuff delivered by tractor trailer.
Has that been through the fire department? That, is that, cause it's not noted on the plan.
No, we have to make revisions to the plan.
So the revisions of the plan will note that and then we'll go back to the fire department for it. The budding structures not being shown? I, I know it's noted, maybe you can pull up the sheet where, where they are shown?
Sure. All the, all the structures are shown on this area photo, which is.
Yeah, so. So I understand they're shown.
Well, at two hundred feet, you can only show them at, you know.
Well, I believe it's a requirement of the, what was noted was in section six point seven, that they're to be shown.
They're shown. They're in two hundred feet.
Nolan can tell where a structure is on that. Is it labeled as structure?
I bet if you look at it, you can put every structure on there, I bet.
Why would you not put it onto a plan that's actually in relation to what you're doing, so that everyone can see the relation of buildings that are next to it, cause does this, does this plan show the proposed building?
Uh, uh, certainly.
It doesn't, I don't think, but maybe it does.
The regulation where it says.
Talk to me, please. Bob, is there a way that you could maybe just on the next, come back and just give us a, a, a bit, a blown up version of the locust, so you can make that out a little bit better?
Absolutely.
I'm a professional engineer, I've done thirty years of business and it's very understood that that means on the actual plans, not on the. I, I've never seen that interpreted, right? So, uh, the billing elevations, again, so we're not, we're gonna require those before approval. Uh, lighting, you know, again, lighting was installed under the current use. It's, it's, it blares out in the street, I mean, it, it lights up the whole.
So we did talk about that, did you?
Okay, I'm not in this.
It's gotta be DocSky compliant, it's gotta comply with the, the, those lighting bylaws for the town and hopefully they can get a photometric drawing for us that will include it when they come back.
And that'll include existing lighting and potential to remove existing lighting?
No, the, the new plan won't include the lighting.
So that's my concern. So if the existing lining stays.
Well, it's gonna be all of the lighting.
Okay.
You're gonna include everything, so the, all of the lights on the accessory building and the new building, these should be shown, so if they need to be DocSky compliant and they exist as not that on the existing, what will the accessory building change it?
I mean, I believe the street's lights that they're, they're on, they're on poles. Right. So I just wanna make sure that's included in this. Compliance.
The lights here are from the road on the street.
But they're not for the street.
Right. No, they're not for the street.
Yeah.
They're, they're for the site. So I would just ask that those be either removed and dealt with, with whatever is reviewed.
Be a good opportunity if you could, just, your site will be a better site if you get more modern lighting and if you could decommission them at that point, that would be, I think beneficial for all parties. Yeah, yep.
And then, um, I might have missed what was said about the dumpster location.
And Tyler, you may not need to put a lot of light poles, wall packs in the building are fine as well. That's the area, you want like the working areas, you just may need a few in the parking area once you light that building. So again, when you have a professional do that design. So again, when you have a professional do that design, they'll, they will work that out for you. You don't need to tell them where you're going to put them, they'll tell you.
Comment twelve with the drainage and the. So as I understand it, test pits were dug as per required by title five at the septic system, absorption system, which.
Septic system's been approved, Bob?
Yes.
No?
So that's here, and the drainage system is down here. So the, the comments being made are that these should apply here. So number one, is that consistent with what the rules of the planning board are?
I think we addressed this.
Yeah, we did this, we didn't.
You're going to dig new, okay.
No, no, he gave them the peer review information, I believe, and that is going to oversee it.
It is required to be.
Okay, so you undo test pits here? Okay, good, missed that from back there. So, again, I, you know, certainly a, a new building could go in, business can be added, but my concern is, and always has been, it's too much for the suck. Coupled with the entrance from Crooked Lane. So it's just a matter of how do we get to the point that everybody's comfortable with what's going to happen in the future? Because if you go out to the site now, there's a lot going on, always has been. And it comes and goes, equipment comes, equipment goes, et cetera. So it's just a concern, no different than down the street, where plans were approved and drainage spaces still yet to be installed. So it's just a concern to make sure that what we say is going to happen here happens. Along with the size and the driveway.
Understandable.
Hi there, Keiko Oral, Crooked Lane. I would add to those concerns that I'm concerned about the size of the building. And I'm also concerned about the, the driveway onto Crooked Lane, the illegal driveway that's there currently operating right now. I would add to that, that the, I'm wondering if the planning board is, Mr. Chair, are you aware of how many businesses are operating in, in the current area right now?
When you say area, the entire town?
No, at one fifty-six Rhode Island Road.
Three?
Okay, are those currently registered with the town?
I have no idea, that's not my job.
So my problem is that I do not believe that they are registered with the town. I filed a formal complaint with the zoning enforcement officer, and I don't believe that the zoning bylaws of the town are being currently observed by the applicant. So that leads me to think that perhaps with the new proposed structure, the zoning bylaws are also not going to be followed by the applicant. So two years ago.
What part of the zoning bylaw do you think won't be observed? Signing up for a business permit?
Changed, they, they've changed the water course, there's, there was flooding in the street, screening of earth, there's no permit for that, bringing earth off and on and off of the property.
Well, those are all proposed to be.
Current lot coverage does not meet the bylaw regulations. The current lot coverage is way out of line with what the lot, what, what our bylaws say. The, they're, they're operating currently without proper sanitation. In July of twenty twenty, it was noted by the zoning board, they were supposed to address the fact that they did not have bathrooms or water. That has not been addressed. So they're operating, a business is operating in town without water and without proper, a proper bathroom.
But they're here trying to do the right thing.
For two and a half years, they've been allowed to operate without that in place. So they've also, I mean, I guess my concern is that where we don't have any plans for the building, we're being asked to take all of this at face value that, you know, this is all going to work out, twelve businesses on a tiny parcel of land, that's problematic, that is very problematic. Because the three businesses that are there currently are disrupted to the neighborhood. So if it was a smaller building and it's not coming, and the trucks aren't coming onto Crooked Lane, then perhaps that's something that could be considered, but we don't know because we don't have, we don't have anything to look at currently. It's been nine months.
And that's where we're going to wait until we get it.
It's been nine months of continuance, continuance, and trying to get to a place where the applicant understands what needs to be included. My concern is that the current businesses continue to operate outside of our town bylaws.
That's nothing to do with this planning board.
I understand that, but I would like to state that the current applicant is not following our rules now, and that any proposed plan should be considering that this applicant is not going to follow the rules in the future. Or I don't know that that, I would hope that they would follow the rules in the future, but the practice has shown that they have not followed the rules. So I would ask the, the planning board to consider all of these things of, of how this business is being operated right now, whether or not twelve businesses are going to be operating and following the rules of the town, like we all try to follow the rules. Currently, I'm not sure that the three businesses are following the rules. So that's where I just would, again, think that the planning board would do diligence and find out if the current businesses are following and, and, and following the, the town bylaws. I filed a formal complaint, the, the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer has written a response, and essentially he agrees that there are violations. So that's where I think that the planning board, if you're really thinking about moving forward, should really think about whether or not this site can handle this many businesses. And I, that's, that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up to that, when the applicant went before zoning board of appeals for the current business located there, zoning board required the driveway to be closed. It was a year, two years.
Plankboarded.
Well, plankboarded.
Wasn't it you?
I thought it was zoning.
We asked because it was close to the stop sign.
They were the recommendation, but it's.
I think there was a little bit of a lag with communication, but it happened.
Yep.
They got it done.
In a long time. So also during that zoning board, it was noted that a bathroom needed to be installed. So when we say we're trying to do the right thing, it was supposed to be part of a two and a half year ago application. That's the comment. That it's not just a matter of, well, we're trying to get there, we're trying to get there, we're trying to get there. If there's a blatant not doing what's been required, that's the concern. And that's the concern as this board looks at this plan, knowing that there is a history, just to make sure that what is approved is actually what's done.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Denmark in ninety-seven Crooked Lane. I don't like the trucks going down Crooked Lane at all either. I know it is almost right across from the operation that Sikorsky has, is, there's a bus stop as well right there. I traverse there every day several times. I don't mind if you have, you know, regular, you know, P O Vs or, but if you could alleviate trucks from going on Crooked Lane, I, I don't really mind if you have an entrance there, but if you could just, you know, have, have like a no truck sign or something going down there, I would go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, that said, Bob, when do you want to come back? We need to continue to a date specific.
Because we have three months to get. Just to get the, we just don't want to invite all.
I understand, yeah, so March ninth to March twenty-third. So I, I make a motion to continue the one fifty-six Rhode Island roadside plan review until March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, good luck, look forward to seeing you back. All right, the next item on our agenda is a site plan review for three forty-eight Bedford Street. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Lakeville zoning bylaw, section six point seven, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December eighth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. at the Lakeville Public Library for Precinct Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment for the following site plan review application. Three forty-eight Bedford Street, the application Red Hand Brewing Company Incorporated seeks site plan review and approval to convert an existing building, formerly a bank, to accommodate a brew pub, which will include a brewery and beer garden. The proposed brew pub will increase the occupant load from the previous twenty-four to forty-five. Twenty exterior seats with a food truck service and served by an outdoor toilet facility are also part of this proposal. The building is part of the Lakeside Landing Commercial Plaza. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, hangers open.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and for your record, my name is Robert Mather, and I represent the Donnelly family, who are the proponents. With me tonight, Donnelly Brothers, Brian, where's Sean? Okay, and Mother Karen, Scott Zion is involved in the project, and Jim Pavlik is the, is the engineer. As the board knows, we were before you informally a month ago. I believe I'd be obligated to repeat my presentation to be on the record. The property, as mentioned in the petition, is at the Bedford Street Landing Plaza, right next to the town hall. It's three, it's the old Plymouth Sabin Building, three forty-eight Bedford Street. And the reason that we need site plan approval is because there's a change in occupancy of the existing business, which increases the previously approved occupant load by ten percent or more. The applicant is seeking review and approval to convert the existing building to accommodate a brew pub, to be known as Red Hand Brewing Company, which will include a brewery and a beer garden. The existing building, of course, went last used, as we probably all remember, was a bankruptcy. It had an occupant load of twenty-four. The proposed brew pub will increase the occupant load to forty-five, which of course is a greater than ten percent increase. Inside, there are forty-five seats, outside, possibility of twenty seats. The, since we last met with the board, and they've had their liquor license hearing before the selectmen, and did, did receive the liquor license. I mentioned to you also that they also need a federal brewing license. That's underway, that takes a while, that's a nine month process. That just, they can still open to sell other beers, but they would not be doing any brewing until they got the federal brewing license. Their proposed hours of operation are Wednesday through Sunday, eleven A M. to nine P M., Friday and Saturday, eleven to eleven, and Sunday, actually, I said Wednesday through Sunday, Wednesday through Thursday, and then Sunday, eleven to, to nine. At this point, before we get into the actual plans, I would like to ask Brian to just come up and, and tell you what his vision for the, the business is and what you'll see there. Brian?
My name's Brian, I live in Six Parkhurst. My older brother Sean came up to me two years ago. I lost my job with COVID, his business suffered a little bit, it's like, let's do something. So I've been brewing, brewing beer for about twelve years, I'm good at it, I make really good beer. Like, let's try opening a brew pub. So we have been to brew pubs all over the world. We know what we want the experience to be, what we want it to be. Family friendly, dog friendly, people to come in, have a great time, have some new beers that they've never tried before, some new things they've never tried before, and just enjoy themselves. Maybe some live music, dynamic guitar playing, and that's it, really simple. Make everybody happy. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Our engineer is Albeck Engineering, Jim Pavlik. Jim, if you could take a few minutes and go through the, the site plan. We did make a few minor tweaks on it just by moving a couple of the parking spaces, and perhaps you can show, when I say tweaks, over the original one that was submitted.
Sure, so good evening. Right, so just for orientation purposes, we have Bedford Street here. The town hall property is to the north. This is right across the street from Massalumps at Pond. This is the True Value Parkway Building, and this is the building where the brew pub would be sited. This is the Lakeside Landing Plaza area itself. And so we're looking to add a, an addition for storage underneath the existing drive-through at the back of the building. Parking circulation is such that you could drive around the building currently. And it's this front portion of the building where the beer garden is proposed. It's going to be a food truck service situated off to the side, and then the seating would be out in front. They're planning on occasionally having some entertainment, guitarist or something like that. Form in the front there. And as far as other features of the site, we're proposing an outdoor toilet facility. I believe there's going to be some pictures available for that. And then at the back of the building, we're going to have a dumpster fenced in along with a wastewater holding tank for the brewery wastewater. So that's, we've been, before the board of health for approval on the septic system, and the addition of this wastewater tank and the outdoor toilet facility. And we've met with conservation. They requested that we file with them due to the presence of the pond and wetlands at the back of the site. So we received the, what's referred to as a negative determination of applicability, meaning that a notice of intent is not required. So we have their approval, the board of health approval for the selectmen, and.
I don't think so.
So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So I do, I want to address specifically a few other things. Lighting, parking, the town hall next door. And I do have a couple of pieces of information that you haven't seen yet, mostly because one is a rendering of what the addition is, is going to look like. So with your permission, I'd like to pass that out. Keep that aside, that's something else. And you can see, it's, this is not going to be a temp. And you can see it's, this is not going to be a temporary addition. You can see it matches completely the. The existing building.
Thank you.
So the addition is going to be done in brick siding and carrying the same roof line across. So it's not going to look like, because this is where the walk-in cooler is, am I correct? But it's not a temporary addition. And, you know, to the credit, I did, forgot to mention that the landowner, Derek Savis, is here also. You know, and to Derek's credit, you know, he's, the addition he's putting on is going to make the building, you know, more valuable, even in the, in the future. The lighting situation, I provided some information to the board previously. But I didn't know if you, if you had copies of those with you, if you made any copies. So I made some extra copies here, which I'd like to pass out. Now, the first page is, is something else, which I'll, I'll address first because it was, it's right on top.
Thank you.
So I'll address parking first because the first page relates to that. The existing plaza has a requirement of a hundred and thirteen spaces. And that, that is, is what is being provided. The site plan will show there's, there's a hundred and thirteen spaces. And, and that is with the additional spaces necessary for the, for the brew pub. There was, the good thing about parking is that the peak hours of operation of the brew pub is completely different from the operation of the other, the other businesses in the plaza. But one of the board members at the last hearing mentioned that Friday afternoons, they're wanting a Friday afternoons was a problem. Because they would start, it is, most people like to go and get a start on the weekend. So what we did is, or what Derek did is he, he went to the cameras, security cameras, for the last three or four Fridays at like three thirty, four o'clock. And you'll see, that's on top, there's very little cars at that time. And then, of course, even at five o'clock, those are, those are even gone. Because of the size of this particular project, which, remember, there's only forty five seats, forty seats inside. And, you know, seats on forty five seats and outside twenty seats. You know, that's a total max occupancy of sixty five. And, you know, people don't, sixty five cars don't go to the brew pub. There's probably an average, if they were max capacity, there'd probably be a max of thirty cars. And there's plenty of parking available there. The lighting is, we did, we did include an illumination plan, which does show all of the lighting all the way around the property. And it shows that there's no point where the light will protrude off of the, of the property. The only thing that they proposed to add would be, the only new lights will be under the front overhang and above the door facing the lake, and on the backside of the building facing the town hall. In addition to, seasonally, they were looking to put some string lights out front. I spoke to Nate Darling today in regard to the, the town's dark sky lighting bylaw. And Nate looked at the specifications for the, the lights on the side of the building, under the overhang and on the side. And he felt that those comply with the dark sky requirements. To be honest, he, he wasn't sure about the string lights. We didn't, we don't have any, any illumination facts on that. But what Nate suggested is, he said, regardless of what the board does, the site has to comply with the dark sky regulations. And he suggested that it would certainly be appropriate for the board to put in a contingency that, you know, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the, Nate said, either building commissioner or a town planner or both would have to approve, show, receive proof that all of the lighting meets the dark sky requirements. The, the, previously, before our last meeting, you did receive some comments from the fire chief. My client has met several times since that time with the fire chief. And he has indicated that he, he has no issues with the project and also has no issues regarding the, the access for the fire truck completely around the, the building. In addition, the, you realize that there is an issue with the town hall parking. It's right next to this. There shouldn't be parking allowed there. It should be a condition in the, in the permit that parking is prohibited. We have no problem with posting any sign or any types of signs that the, either the planning board or the board of selectmen want about subject to fines, subject to, to being towed. And, you know, my clients will, will monitor that so that there is no parking in the, in the town hall. In addition, I did notice that the town planner made a suggestion to put no parking fire lane sign at the entrance to the rear parking lot and along the back of the east wing. And last month, when we were here, there was also a suggestion of making that loop around the building when it goes around the side towards coming out towards the hardware store, making that one-way. So we would be, the board requested, we would post that as one-way signs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
There was some discussion about a fence that being put up between the two properties. I did a little bit of legwork. I reached out to Highway Department Superintendent, and actually Derek's father. I didn't have Derek's number. I reached out to the, I don't know if you'd call him the previous building owner or. But both parties agreed that snow plowing gets done in the direction of that grass strip. And it would be most likely that the fence would be damaged if a fence was put there. Highway Frank, Highway Superintendent Franklin also was concerned about line of sight if it was a stockade fence or a solid panel fence closer to Route eighteen with cars leaving both plazas, of the plaza and the town hall parking lot. I got an opinion from council on how to handle that. Police chief also weighed in. Ultimately, council would like to see possibly some signage that maybe states parking for town hall business only be put up on the spaces in the town hall by the applicant or paid for by, however that gets handled. She also suggested, and it might be a good thing just to show good faith, was to enter into an indemnification agreement with the board of selectmen on any legal matters that would maybe, if somebody did park in the town hall parking lot, that if there was a slip and fall, they just don't want to be responsible for that. So I don't know if that's something I could have council look at drafting or.
Well, I certainly will be willing to talk to council, and I'm guessing it's so that if people do park there.
Yeah.
And get injured, it would indemnify. I would imagine our insurance would cover that.
Yeah.
I think we can make sure that, that it does.
So I'm just going to state for the record, that is outside of site plan review.
Yeah.
But I just, in doing my due diligence, that came up. So I'm going to leave it to you, Bob, to, to either reach out to Amy Quesal or the board of selectmen and ask them how, if that could be handled. I'm sure that if there's an issue, there'll be a problem, you know.
Yeah.
And I just, I just don't want to see a problem. I think, for the most part, this is well-received and we just don't want to, not, you know, dot any i's or cross any t's, but still be fair to all parties.
Yeah. We, we have said before, and then we say it again, that, you know, we're willing to work with the town to make sure that there is no parking in the, in the town hall parking lot, whether it's signage or. I'd certainly be willing to speak to her about that. And, and, you know, as long as we're comfortable that our insurance would cover that, we, which I think we could make it so it does.
Yeah.
And I think we would be willing to explore that. It also should point out that the outdoor beer garden will have, it's required by the A B C C. To have a barrier there.
Yeah.
Now, it's a, it's a low movable type of barrier. So there's not free flow from the parking lot. In other words, somebody would have to climb over that little barrier to, to get in. So, and, and I think the combination of that small barrier and signage and the, a, an occupant who's willing to work with the town, if, if, see it's a problem, give them a call. And whoever's on duty will, will make sure that those, those vehicles are, are removed. So again, we'll do whatever the selectmen want us to do as far as signage and.
Yep. Okay, so I, I think as far as we go, we're going to require you to do signage and work it out with them.
Yeah.
You know, e- either it be their choice, their choice with council, or maybe the, I don't know if the police chief or highway superintendent would get involved, but.
Whatever signs they want.
A requirement and any approval we would do to make that a condition, but you guys work it out.
We would expect that condition.
Do any other planning board members have any comments or anything they want to talk about?
We probably touched on this when, when you were in for the preliminary, but like, what, what keeps people from accidentally driving into the beer garden? You know, that's kind of a, unfortunately, that happens, you know?
So what we're, what we're going to do is have, I think there's six-foot horse watering troughs. We're going to fill them, they're, I think, three or four feet high. We're going to fill them with soil and throw hops out of them.
Oh, okay.
So first of all, they're going to be very, very heavy. They're not going to move. So if someone hits it, the car is not going to, not going to make it here. But it's going to look really nice with all these hops thrown up there.
How do you get the food truck to get it out then?
It's going to go around.
Around the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you know, I did have a question that came to mind about the food truck. Now, is it going to be exclusively for the Red Head Hand Brewing? Or will people still be able to order from the food truck, come in, grab their food?
Absolutely.
Out of curiosity.
You don't have to, well, that's a great angle, though. You have to buy a beer. They can come in, use our picnic tables if they want to eat, but they don't have to buy anything from us. That's the deal we have with local motion. And vice versa. You know, they don't have to buy food from them if they want to come in and have a beer. When the, when the outdoor bathroom facility is towed away in November or whatever, the, you still have bathrooms in, inside, correct? One of each? And those are ADA? Yes. Okay. You know what? I can't speak to that. I'm assuming. If they're not, they will be. Okay.
Anything else you thought?
No, it looks good.
Just going through Mark's notes.
My only thing is, as far as fence goes, I mean, it doesn't have to be a solid wood fence. It was, the way it was described here, it'd be set back so it wouldn't affect the, you know, any site distance because it's, it starts where the bushes, and there are already bushes closer to the street itself. And it was only four feet high. It really provides some screening and stuff. But it had some delineation between air site and the town hall site. I mean, even a slick rail fence would look maybe more in keeping with Lakeville's rural character, as we say.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Anybody could walk out to the sidewalk and walk around the fence. I think the signage, I don't want to see people towed. I think maybe a ticket is, you know, sufficient.
And I have no problem if someone parks over there yelling at them and having them move. If not, I'll take mama.
All right, so where are you on fence, Peter? I'm, I'm sort of opposed to.
I think the way it flows right now with grass to grass from one building, from one, I'm fine without it. And I'm sort of along the thinking with anything like this, if something, if this thing should become a problem, then we'll deal with it. I'd rather not go through the whole, because I do believe if we put a fence there and people park there, they're going to walk down to the road, run around Bedford Street and hop back up. And that's the last thing you want. There's like, people fly on that road. You're better off.
And you can't gate the driveways.
Yeah. So I, I'm actually, at this point, I'm just like, no fence. We'll see what happens. If, if, so if the selectmen feel it becomes a problem, though, then you'll have to just deal with them, you know? Yeah.
Jack?
See what happens with all the fence.
Nora?
I agree, no fence. I could just see people running in and flipping over the fence.
Yeah.
Or become somewhere to sit, sit on.
Sit on, go back.
All right.
Too much, too much hops, yeah.
Local motion was pretty looking to the skyward.
Yeah.
And I do to the. Mutually beneficial.
So could you just show, you had said you've kind of finagled free parking spaces somewhere? I don't, I think I might have missed it if we discussed it already.
Show what? I'm sorry.
You had said we had maybe shifted around like three parking spots.
The, I know one of it, see, the, these spaces here were moved just a little closer to the building because the rendering that we had of a fire truck turning kind of cut the corner there. And where's the other one? Back, in the back, Jim?
We.
We re-strike, going to re-strike the center. You'll notice, if you can look at it, there's, there's shaded lines. They're kind of shifting it this way, again, to the turn, the turning ratio. Those were the only changes.
Yes.
Didn't change the number of spaces. Just moved some up and some, some back.
Okay, and it just, for the record, so I did have a couple of lengthy conversations with Leah Fabian from the select board. She was sort of in agreeance with the no fence thing and signage would be satisfactory. So that said, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. And issue an approval for the site plan with the condition the lighting be dark sky compliant to meet with the Lakeville's bylaw requirements. To add the signage for parking for town hall business only by the applicant, where that gets worked out between the town and the applicant or the board of selectmen. A possible indemnification agreement between the applicant and the board of selectmen. And then the two signs that the town planner had recommended, the fire lane sign, no parking, and the one-way. Sign, no parking, and the one-way sign that was mentioned at the previous meeting. So would those conditions be added, that's my motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, the uh next item on our agenda is a public hearing for four fifteen Millennium Circle Road. Uh the Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Lakeville zoning bylaw su- section six point seven will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December eighth. At seven P M. At the Lakeville Public Library, Four Precinct Street, the purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment on the following site plan review. Application, it's for four fifteen Millennium Circle, the applicant D F C of Lakeville, four fifteen L L C. Seeks site plan review for approval for a change in use of an existing building from industrial warehouse. To a marijuana growing facility. The proposed project is to include interior and exterior building improvements as well as. Site plan improvements, which will result in drainage improvements and uh reduction in imperious surfaces. So at that, this point, I'd like to make a motion to open this hearing.
So moved. Oh, you made the motion second, sorry.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries, hearing is opened.
Good evening, Jamie Bisnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record, good evening, um I'll try to make this somewhat quick. Uh back in two thousand nineteen, uh we appeared in front of you for a site plan for this exact building, for this use. Um and for this project. Um we had covid hit, things kinda took a turn and the um the property owner who's with me. Um hit, this is Mister Di Martino, um you know, the the game plan changed a little bit. So we're still going forward with the exact same use, which is cultivation inside of the building itself. But um as far as the layout with architecture um on the outside for mechanical units and parking and things, we looked at it, had some time to work on it. And have made some adjustments. So I wanted to kinda go over those with you, I I perceive this part of the plan to really be. Uh minor modification um from our two thousand nineteen approval. Um but I'm also gonna talk very quickly about this being what we're considering phase one. We're hoping if things go well here, to do a phase two as well. Uh which would be uh which would be additional and would be much more review work for Mark. Um alright, so presently, this site has about seven point two acres, it's on Millennium Circle. Um it's on the northern side of Route forty-four, and it's right on the Taunton Middle Borough Lakeville. Triangle, um you know, borders of those three uh municipalities. What we're what we're looking to do here is um set up the stages for the marijuana uh growing facility inside. Handle adequate parking, um and be able to um. Be able to just run the business for this, and we're also planning for that future growth. Uh we've gotten approval through the uh Board of Health for the septic system, which is actually being installed. Um and there is some work that's going on there under the existing site plan. But there are some modifications which we'll go over uh as slight as they are, um that we'd like to get the blessing from the board on. Um just in full transparency, and then this will also set up the stage for if we do move forward with phase two in the future. Um some of those changes would actually be our reduction in asphalt. You're gonna see on as part of this proposal, we're removing asphalts over in this area, in these areas here. In here, they're hatched on our plans, um it's a crosshatch. Um and the existing uh asphalt that we're gonna retain is dark gray on this plan here, so we're actually going from. Uh roughly forty uh fifty four point eight percent, which is above our zoning compliance limit. We're going down to forty-two point, oh, I'm sorry, forty-six point two percent. So we'll be bringing this down into uh compliance with the zoning bylaw because it's existing on conforming. Um parking requirements for the site based on the zoning is twenty required. We're showing twenty-one, I I understand that that may be an issue because of the history of Lakeville. And cultivation facilities in town and parking, my office is right near several and and believe me, I've I've noticed. We have plenty of gravel area that they park tractor trailer trucks in now, that's gonna remain untouched. So during construction and even during um operation, that is still gonna remain open, the tractor trailers are gonna be gone. Cause this is gonna be a gated yard with um with a still the same as what we had before, this will be the sliding gate that you'll need. Um for the key fob to get into, and this will be gated and closed um. Before I know the the fire department wanted knock boxes to be able to get in and access. So there won't be the trucks stored up in back, the trailer trucks, um that'll be completely open if. Overflow parking is needed or accessory parking. When we do eventually move to phase two, if it does happen, we're gonna provide additional parking for um at that point, so I think we can. Hopefully deal with any parking issues, we can see how it's going, we'll have a nice litmus test, and we'll be able to gauge it off of that. We do have to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, um what we found was that. Um our hopes for phase two is to increase the length of the building to go back, we would include these units um for um. Air control inside, heat, temperature, humidity, they're running on both sides, we would we would continue those down, so what what we found was that. Um to make the drainage and everything work, um we would, it's gonna essentially create a semi-low point here. And so we have a catch basin with a treatment system proposed here, a storm scepter. That will come out and discharge to the back here, and we showed that on this plan. So what that does is that puts us within a hundred foot buffer of the B V W, so we'll be filing a notice of intent with the commission. For that. In full disclosure as well, um the endangered species habitat line does cut across, so they'll be notified as well, fisheries and wildlife. Um and they have thirty days to give us our a decision, I don't expect that this will have. Uh since it's such a de minimis amount, I don't think they're gonna have any problem with it, um but when we move to phase two, if we do. Uh it'll be a much more significant review and process. Part of our uh updated site plan two as well is uh beyond the septic is these air handling units, um what we're doing is. The condensate that drips from them, we've had a mechanical engineer, um take a look, come up with the calculations for the condensate that will come out. We're taking and handling it and infiltrating it in dry wells, um one here and one over in here. I went over those uh the schematics of it with Mark, uh Mark had a good comment about lining the stone of the dry wells will filter fabric. And we will definitely make that modification to the plan set. Aside from those points right there, there's really, I don't believe there are any changes to the site plan different from two thousand nineteen. But I also understand that maybe some of you weren't here in two thousand nineteen, or maybe you have questions or have just forgotten. I'm happy to go over anything you'd like or answer answer any questions, and I did bring some old plans, the two thousand nineteen endorsed plans, in case you wanna look at them.
So as you referenced to Jamie, the the parking with uh some of these facilities. It's it's probably something actually that the planning board needs to review our parking requirements, because I think. Some of the issue is it gets treated, because it's in industrial zones, as warehouse standards. And it's it's really not. And it and again, I'm just for you you guys benefit now. It's good that you have sort of the bank space in the back. But I think a lot of what happens is with the office space, it's really, that needs to be delineated on a plan. For for the parking requirements to say, it's, you know, probably one per one hundred. Instead of one per one thousand or something crazy, cause it's not, it's it's way more of a hands-on. Thing, and then when you get the, you know, twenty percent of the building's office space, the the. Occupant load shoots right out. Uh so that's it.
Yep, I'm not in disagreement.
It's good that you have some space, uh I I would hope that if it's not lined parking spaces, that it's somewhat convenient for folks. You know, if nobody wants to park a nice pile of gravel if they don't have to. Knowing that there's a phase two, you know, be prepared to probably. Pick that up, at that point, I assume you'll be up and running and have a better handle on your needs as well.
And that's the hope is, um you know, see how the business goes and grows and its success and um. And then we do, we ha- this is a nice sized lot, it's in a good spot for this use, I think. Um the zoning board and the planning board, when we were previously in front of them, I think we all kind of agreed on that. Um seeing um other uh similar uses, I knew the parking would be a question, we discussed it. Um while their intention with their employees, they think they have a good handle on what it's gonna be. We have the ability, in case it does exceed that, that it won't become a burden to the town.
No, Jamie, if I could just for clarification, did you say that phase two might actually move into that additional parking area though?
It absolutely would, so we'll we'll be back in front of you for phase two with a whole new parking plan.
Okay, so my second question was gonna be, is there a reason you can't go up rather than out if you were to do a s- phase two?
I think it's a lot of structural cost. So.
You'd have to close the business.
It would be, it would be extremely difficult, yeah.
So I think at this point, I just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance to comment, because I feel like we probably should continue you. Just to let you get approval, at least from Concom. It looks fairly innocuous, and I'm not trying to hold you up with it, it's just. My feeling is just, I don't wanna sign a plan that's not the final plan. You know, you went through all of Mark's comments, he's answered pretty much all your questions, Mark, or?
Uh yeah, well, the 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 parking was pretty obvious, I mean. It's just to make sure the trucks are gonna be gone, and then um the drywall wrapping.
Yep, and we and we can provide you with a lighting plan for the next time we meet, um not a problem at all, we'll make sure it complies with dark sky. Fact, I believe part of the architectural set has one, um it would be my fault for not including it in the package, but we'll get that rectified.
Okay. Anyone else wanna, Peter?
So Jamie, um I see how you removed the concrete up in the upper right-hand corner, or the eh you know. Why? Why not keep it as parking?
It flows into phase two, so phase two um is gonna be right up the board's alley in the fact that we're gonna be looking for the two density waivers.
By that time you get to that, okay.
Yeah, so we're so we we kinda got lucky, the building's set sixty feet off, so we. Get the parking starting at past sixty feet, and we actually fell into a lot of things that will actually, I think, help us work to. Trigger those uh requirements that are needed to get the landscaping ten percent. The architectural, we've already started discussing and have some ideas to kinda come up with it. It's a metal building, so we're gonna have to work with the board and the architects, we'll probably bring the architects in. And get the board's opinion on, you know, on some some looks for it here that's reasonable.
Looking holes in the side of the building right now.
But yeah, we so I think that with the phase two is gonna be, it's gonna be a much bigger lift, and and. Mister Di Martino's aware of it, I'm aware of it, uh Mark and I spoke at length about it. Um and but that's why we're getting rid of that asphalt there, is it's it's gonna flow into the next phase. And so, you know, we wanna just be upfront, we didn't wanna hide phase two, you're a planning board, you're trying to plan the next steps. Uh we hope that that's what's coming, but we don't need it, we don't need it to function, so we're getting rid of it.
So that's the two to ten year plan?
Good evening, Chair, members, Dominic Di Martino, the owner of the facility. The original set of plans that we have in this twenty-six thousand, approximately twenty-six thousand square foot building, had a mezzanine. In in probably the third front. And um you know, it looked good on paper when the architects did it, we had an elevator with a shaft and the whole nine yards, and then. Um we at some point, we got into the building, and you know, we kinda looked up and said, well, anybody that's over five foot eight. The beams are hanging down with these space buildings, you have to duck or 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 get a knock on your head, and uh. What it was gonna cost to do the mezzanine with the elevator and and it just, it started not make sense really fast, so. We we know that if uh twisted growers starts to do well, we are gonna need that addition, because we're. There was about eight thousand square feet that was gonna be on the second level, that's no longer there at this point.
So I just, it it and it doesn't really matter, I'm not. I'm just saying, if this goes well, you're gonna get up and running. And then between two years and ten years, you'll be coming back to us to say, we gotta add on now.
It'll be within eighteen to twenty-four months, no question about it.
Uh does anybody else have any questions or comments, Phil?
Jamie, is it, you have the HED cap spots?
I'm sorry. Yes, we do, actually, uh tha- and that was part of the original site plan approval too, was ADA accessibility. Uh right now, you were to go out there and you you could get into the building, but the it the specs weren't there. Um so that that's been addressed over on this side of the building here with ramps.
Sufficient access for the ladder trucks and fire department?
Oh, absolutely, there's ample. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh any public comment?
I love everything I see, I'm uh one fifty-five million circle, I'm right across from them in the building. I don't know if I'm on the right subject or not, the only thing I'm really afraid of, or I'd like to see some blueprints on, on on the uh smell. I'm worried about the smell, I'm worried about the smell of my twelve tenants that I have. And and everybody in the park, I'm the president also, too, of the of the park. And they're all coming up to me concerned about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I hear that some places that have good blowers. And they do certain things, and there's ones that don't.
Yeah, no, you're you're a hundred percent right, cause you 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 can drive by a lot of sites and tell from a ways.
I'm not happy with the one over here.
So the next time that that we I come out, I I can bring some more information, but but we do have an engineer. That that has uh gone through this, and there's scrubbers in the facility that should address that. And I'll bring more information next time I come out, but that is one of the regulations that Lakeville requires, that that dissent. Is eliminated or or minimized, uh and I will bring more information in regards to that, and just to address uh my neighbor's building, Glenn. Um he recited the part of his building that faces forty forty Route forty-four. Where when we're when we finish the building, we're gonna color our building to match the color of his building, so that it has some symmetry in it. And it it looks like it matches what he's done, because the um green or that uh seaweed color must have been in. In the seventies, we're gonna we're gonna change it to your color, so, and I will bring in information next time I come in.
I'm sorry, could we just have your name for the record?
Yes, Glenn Ushah.
Um they, are we still using the same technology that we that we showed with Z B A? Okay, so when when we did the zoning.
The whole community agreement.
It is, and and it, we brought in the um the the people that actually manufactured the the spray, and they did the demonstration, the zoning board was. That I think they sprayed ammonia on the perfume sticks. And and they were doing, and then they'd sprayed the thing that's going on, the the jets to get rid of the smell, and it disappeared instantly, it was pretty amazing. I agree, though, that that would be my my main concern.
I got twelve tenants, I don't wanna come running to me, and it's gonna affect my payroll, you know what I mean?
Yep, nope, we I've, you can bring the information next time.
That's my biggest concern, but other than that, everything I love to see what you're doing.
Thank you.
Come on up to Mike, please.
Just a quick question. Is there a retail component to the to the phase?
No, there is not, the only thing that, the only thing that may be coming, uh at some point. Uh we're working with a a woman, but it hasn't happened yet, but we're trying to get a H C A for it, is a home delivery license. But no retail in other location, but there could be coming.
Did you try for an application for that, I thought there was one pending?
There's, we're we're trying to get an H C A currently, but that right now, the the town's not not giving it to us at this point.
But you do have an application pending that.
We're we're try, we we made, there's a request, and it's it's as far as gone, there is a request, but there's.
But not for a dispensary?
Not for dispensary.
It's only for the home deliveries, so it would ship out here.
You're confusing, there's a request uh in the building in front of forty-four where the R V store is. I know that there's a a a an identity that is trying to do a a dispensary there, but that's not, that's not us. And we we do not have any dispensaries, nor are we trying to achieve that.
Okay, great, happy with everything else.
All right, so I I think we're good.
Yep.
I've, you know, come back with approval from Concom, I. And like I said, for the future, just look to if you can increase your parking, I I can say, I think we as a board need to address that. To cover office space, cause it's.
Do you mind if we designate a couple of spots on the gravel? Okay, we'll designate some spots in the gravel for the board, and that way, you know, just setting the right steps going forward, we can do that, we'll update the plans.
All right. So we do need to. So we do need to, because it's a public hearing, move to continue to a date specific? Have you applied already to CONCON?
No, I am going to be asking Dominic to sign the notice tomorrow, so I would expect that I'll be filing Monday. So I'm guessing 45 days to 60 days makes sense, because I need natural heritage. 45 days would be in that range.
February 9th or 23rd?
February 9th would be ideal.
Unless you think January 26th?
I am optimistic, but I do, you know, let's do January 26th because natural heritage has 30 calendar days from when they receive it. So I'll get it expedited to them. So yeah, January, if we can do it at the end of January, that would be fantastic.
Yep. All right, so I make a motion to continue the, what is it, 415 Millennium Circle hearing until January 26th at 7:00 PM. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you, appreciate your patience tonight.
Appreciate you guys' patience. All right, so we're almost done, folks. We've got a couple of sets of minutes. Has everybody reviewed the minutes for October 13th?
Page 2, in regards to the public hearing number 3, the third paragraph down, I just wanted to note for the record that when Ms. Corb here spoke, she did mention witnessing
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I can't, you're sitting next to me, I can't even hear you out. Guys?
Minutes, sorry, more of the minutes, making that amendment, I thought we were done.
She did mention witnessing rattlesnakes and turtles, and rattlesnakes are endangered. I think it's just important to note that for the record in that paragraph. Other than that, it looked good, so I would recommend, or I would motion to approve the October 13th.
Who's going to pass along that amendment?
That change?
Did you get that, Kathy? Snakes and sparklers? Rattlesnakes, huh? All right, so I make a motion to approve the October 13th minutes with the change noted. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. October 27th, everybody review them?
Yep, I have a couple items. Under others present, Planning Board Clerk Cathy Murray was also present. And then on page 3, under public hearing number 3, it says, "Mr. Knox advised this would add and allow licensed junk dealers in the business zone", which, that's not accurate. He advised that this would only be allowed in the business zone, because it was removing residential, in regards to the licensed junk dealers. So if we could just change that wording.
So I make a motion to approve the October 27th minutes with the change noted. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. That concludes the minutes. We have in our packet a meeting schedule for meeting dates for 2023. Two with asterisks if needed, 8/24, which would be the summer break, and 12/28, which would be a week nobody's here, probably. And the second meeting at 11:00 falls on Thanksgiving anyway? So is everybody good with these meeting dates? Or do we need a meeting to think about it? Pretty much the standard, you know, I'm good with the second, fourth?
We could approve them and change them if needed, right?
So I make a motion to approve these meetings, the scheduled meeting dates for 2023. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. So, next meeting date, are we going to meet, or do we have any business to meet in this month?
We did not continue anything till the last meeting of the month. You continued stuff until January
So our next meeting is going to be on January 12th at 7:00 PM. That's my announcement.
Unless you want to meet.
No, no, if we have no business, we don't want to meet. Not two days before Christmas, we don't need to. Mark, if you have any correspondence, it's late, we're going to carry it to the next meeting. Is there anything important?
Nothing important, just the same thing, more medical marijuana in growing operations in Free Town, warehousing in Cotton, those are the largest items. And there is one in Middleborough, the between the two highway exits going south, like a million square feet of warehousing, almost. And so it has expressed some concern about whether traffic would affect Lakeville as trucks come up toward, that would be north on whatever
285?
Yeah, whatever that main road is to get to, to get to, yeah, to get to the highway, you know, to get to the highway exit at the end of Main Street, although I've been told that their, Middleborough is going to require everyone to go south on 28, highway exit further south, even if they're going north. So that it doesn't, because those intersections, Bridge Street are already going to be congested, so.
And I just have a, the Taunton Warehouse, where is that? Is that a mall?
It's a Galleria Mall.
So I would like to hear about that next time. Let's keep that on.
It doesn't really say anything, I mean, these are just like hearing notices, so.
Yeah, I think it's just good to let the public know when we have a little something to share.
788 Boston Road? No, this is the one, sorry, rural residence situated on Myrick Street. Is that the one that's right at the town line? So that's the one that everyone's concerned about, just over the town line. So that one is for 83,000 square foot warehouse, so. Free Town has medical marijuana establishment of almost a million square feet.
Is it market saturation yet?
4 and 7 Campanelli Drive, Sonic, this is part of that town.
The Village of Free Town.
Yeah, that's huge.
That's like one that you would drive by for a while. No, like you'd be dropping by it for quite a while.
I'll do it right now.
Motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.